Comment, Mayor. Thank you. And I'll, City Attorney, at your convenience, please. I'd just like to understand the answer to that. Thank you. I'm done for now.
Any other questions?
So I wanted to ask, so prior to January 1st of 2023, it's, the Levine Act is three months, 250. I mean, it's not 250, but just three months. It didn't affect local officials. So, and I also read in the, in the legislation that it's not retroactive.
Correct.
So those are two very important points. I think as we have multiple discussions, one is the, is it's not retroactive and, and that's it. I lost my train of thought. Sorry.
You, you are correct. It is not retroactive, and that was actually new regulations that were put out by the FPPC. Initially, there were some questions about whether or not it would be retroactive, and thanks to recent regulations, which is kind of what prompted some of the additional information, you are correct. It is not retroactive. And just really going back again to talking about the willful and knowing receipt, it's a requirement that requires actual knowledge. And, and actual knowledge is not imparted by contribution reporting alone. So simply contribution reporting alone does not establish actual knowledge, because oftentimes, as you are sure, well aware, you're not intimately involved with all of the reporting that takes place. And so they've been very specific about making it known that contribution reporting in and of itself does not establish actual knowledge. So there has to be facts that establish other reasons to know of the contribution. In other words, someone informed the officer, or the officer personally solicited the contribution, or they personally received the contribution. Just the actual reporting alone is not sufficient. As note as well is that this limit does not apply to PACs or committees that are not controlled by the officer.
Another question is the, so the City of Hollister, their, the policy, there is no enforcement, whereas enforcement would be covered by, I'm assuming, FPPC, right, for the Levine Act?
That's correct.
So there's actual enforcement with the Levine Act. There is no enforcement with the City of Hollister policy?
So, and this kind of goes back to Councilmember Burns' question as well. Under the ordinance, it sets the limit for the contribution amount. However, enforcement would still occur under the Levine Act through the government code, through the FPPC.
All right. So I don't have a question, but I do have a comment, since we're going to go on to another topic that you're giving. I just wanted to, I was going to say this later in the meeting, but since we're talking about the Levine Act. So I wanted to address it because an accusation was made against me during the meeting by Councilmember Resendis that I had violated the Levine Act. And so I actually did write to the FPPC to get advice and outline for them that I had received a few contributions last year, and that I had returned them, and, you know, was I in violation? And they said absolutely not, that, you know, it did not go into effect, SB 13, or 1439, didn't go into effect until January 2023. So I, it's not retroactive. I did not violate anything, and it's just another false allegation. So I just wanted to say that, so.
Thank you.
I think that's it. Can you carry on?
Okay. We can always circle back if you need to.
Sure. Thank you.
Let me get back to, I believe it was the automated license plate recognition, retention use of data. This is Assembly Bill 1463, which is a bill to watch and may go into effect in 2024 potentially. So existing legislation requires ALPR, the license plate recognition operators and end users, to create usage and privacy policies to keep ALPR information secure using commercially reasonable means and processes and practices. But they cannot retain that information for more than 60 days unless the data is actively being used in an investigation. This bill would require public agencies and end users or operators to purge their ALPR information, particularly that information that does not match a hot list. A hot list being a license plate that's been listed, that's potentially been stolen, or is a license plate that's associated with some type of a crime or investigation. So if it's not on that hot list, this bill would require the, that that information be purged within 30 days, and it would also prevent agencies from being able to access that information, 60 days, or information that's older than 60 days. And the, the policy surrounding the purging of the non-hot-listed items was to prevent use of the information for enforcing federal immigration law, bans on abortion services, or bans on gender-affirming medical care. Any questions on that?
Councilmember Burns?
Of course, Mayor. Thank you. Has the State Attorney General issued any kind of an opinion on this, or the League of Cities have a position on it, or the Cal Chiefs?
They have not issued anything. I think it's particularly because it's, it's still, I believe it's back on, it was amended, and so the final version has gone through the House. It's still pending to go through the Senate, and I believe House Appropriations Committee. So that's why we simply put it up there as something to watch, particularly with the fact that we know the city's going to be implementing ALPR technology. So it's just something to be aware of, and we'll continue to monitor it so that if it does go into effect, we can address it as necessary.
Have the companies that are offering these services, have they weighed in at all? I know that we're going to be discussing this later, and my sense is if this becomes law, they'll be reactive to that, but.
I, from my review that I've had of, of ALPR contracts, they generally will already provide protections, and most cities actually will require them to be able to provide those commercially reasonable protections of that information. So essentially, it would, if the city itself wasn't storing the information, it would be on the providers themselves who are storing it to be able to purge those records. So it would really be, the onus would be on them to do that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions?
Thanks. So then we'll move on to the really interesting item of land use and streamlined housing approvals. As you all know, SB 35 was implemented, and it approves multi-family housing developments without public input, environmental review, and essentially it makes approval of these projects ministerial. This is a Senate bill that's been introduced, which will extend the provisions of SB 35. So SB 35 was set to expire on January 1st, 2026. However, if this bill passes, again, this is also, has been amended, and the final record is being reviewed by the Appropriations Committee. And so if this does go into effect as it is currently written, it will extend that deadline until January 1 of 2036. It will also allow the Department of General Services to act on behalf of local governments for ministerial reviews on state-owned or leased properties. The bill also removes the prohibition of streamlined housing approvals in coastal zone developments, and it proposes to remove requirements for prevailing wages and skilled workforces, and it's attempting to replace it with a certification process that will be run by the Labor Commissioner to enforce prevailing wage obligations, however, with a slight tweak in the process of, of that. Currently, local governments must approve developments complying with the planning standards, but the bill shifts approval authority to the Planning Director or equivalent position. It also imposes streamlined approval requirements on all departments issuing entitlement approvals within specified timeframes, and local governments cannot demand additional standards or materials unrelated to objective planning standards before approving a development under the streamlined process. Questions?
Yes, Councilmember?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, not a question, but a recommendation or a request that maybe this council asks the city manager, man, that feels good saying that, to put together a plan of action in the event that this bill does move forward. I'm hard to believe it won't, but, but it would be nice, and then for the city attorney's office to just see how this, how we move forward on a legal analysis as well. Hard, just hard to believe this won't go forward, and, and I'd rather be proactive and prepared than reactive and playing defense if we don't have to. Thank you, Mayor.
And as a follow-up to your question, that was with the last bill that was discussed, with respect to this one, SB 423, Cal City strongly opposes this one. So they have taken a position on it.
Any other questions, or?
What did they oppose?
The land use and streamlined housing. I believe they oppose it because of the fact that it's taking control away from cities to be able to, to kind of steer the development.
Yeah, one statement here says it allows the state to approve housing developments on property owned or leased by the state, and prohibit a city from enforcing its inclusionary housing ordinance if the income limits are higher than those in SB 35.
Mayor?
Yes.
I think I'd like to expand on Councilmember Burns. I think for any, any new laws that come into effect, we should have a plan of action in terms of an analysis, what departments are going to be impacted, what's the timeline, is it going to be, are we going to have, does it come with money, or is the city going to have to come up with the money, and then the timelines for implementation so that we're aware, and we have the, and then what policies or ordinances are going to be impacted so that they can be brought back in time of the matter to, to review?
So, so we have looked at that prior to this, and primarily, what makes it difficult is the fact that it could potentially be amended again when it goes through the Senate. And so once the final full bill is, is kind of fleshed out, then at that point, we'll know exactly what would need to be tweaked and/or moved around.
Wasn't just talking about that bill, I was talking about all bills. Any, anything that comes through that impacts or touches the city, or anything that impacts, like it could be parks and wrecks, or it could be the police, it could be the, no longer, I mean, the utilization of canines. So anything that comes through that impacts the city, that type of analysis.
Along with, for example, what ordinances need to be amended to comply with that.
Gotcha.
And so the, the final topic is emergency medical services, and this is under AB 1168. This bill was proposed in response to a court case, City of Oxnard v. County of Ventura. In that case, the court ruled that Oxnard lost its authority to provide pre-hospital EMS after signing a joint powers authority agreement with the county. So essentially, what had happened is the City of Oxnard had entered into a JPA, or Joint Powers Authority, with the county to provide this EMS services, and when the level of EMS services wasn't at a level that the city thought it should be for the residents within the city, they attempted to withdraw themselves from the JPA in order to be able to go back to providing the EMS services themselves. They went to court, and the court ruled that the county had authority over their, their pre-hospital EMS services because of the fact that they had entered into the JPA, and so now if they were going to get out of it, the county retained that power. So this bill's been introduced to ensure that cities entering into a JPA with the county after January 1st, 2024, will not lose their authority regarding the administration of pre-hospital EMS services. And the reason we brought this up is just because of kind of the provision of medical services. It's a bit in flux throughout the state. Oftentimes municipalities and counties are looking for more cost-effective measures, and entering into a JPA is oftentimes one of those measures that's utilized in order to be able to increase the effectiveness of the EMS services. So this will help to ensure that a city entering into a JPA won't lose their authority thereafter. And that was the end of that. If you have any questions?
Any further questions? Sure.
I do.
Yes.
So when we introduced the campaign reform policy and ordinance, we were told by a different attorney that because of the way that it was written, it would not be enforced by FPPC. So for example, for our policy, we have to report everything that totals up to a dollar. Things, things of that nature would not be enforced by the FPPC, but you're saying that, that they will enforce everything that's written into our ordinance.
So, so what I was saying is that any violations under the Levine Act of the government code would be enforced by the FPPC, and generally, elections items are enforced by the FPPC. We could look into that to, to double check on that for the ordinance, as far as the campaign contributions or violation of the ordinance itself, we could look into. But I do know that as far as the Levine Act and the government code sections and the, the recusal requirements that is enforced by the FPPC.
I think getting, obtaining clarity would be important for, for us, for me. That was me, for us.
Any other questions, or can we take public comment? Is there any public comment?
Just a second, Mayor. We do not have any public comments for this item.
Okay. Well, unless you have any other comments, then thank you very much. I appreciate the update.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, Council, this was also, I know some direction was provided. If, if there's any other direction you want to provide regarding this presentation, now would be the time. It was agendized that way.
Does that mean like increasing the?
Oh, I think that's a different topic. I mean, talking about legal, Tim, did you have?
No, my, my understanding was we're going to do this on a quarterly basis. Is that?
Correct.
Okay. No, I think this is great.
Yeah.
Today's been really informative, and it's, it's, this is all real team building for us, too. I think it's really awesome. So thank you, sir.
All right. So, yes.
Sorry about that. So we can provide direction in terms of the campaign reform. Is that what I'm hearing?
You can. That's why it was, it was agendized for direction. So if you have any direction regarding campaign reform, the contribution, whatever it was that my colleague brought up, now would be the time to give that direction, if you would like.
If you don't mind, Mayor, I'd like to potentially discuss increasing the campaign contribution limit. I know we have the Levine Act, but some of the ordinance, some of the components about reporting everything that adds up to a dollar, I know it's for transparency, but because of the limited amount of money and the cost for accountants, it, it is, you know, in terms of the purpose and the intent of it, there could be transparency, but also the reporting requirements are, I don't want to say a lot, there's a better word for it. So I was hoping to have a discussion today about potentially looking at the, our policy and potentially modifying the policy to update it, since we do have a lot of other measures in place that kind of safeguard a lot of the concerns that the previous council had about campaign contributions. So I'd like to just start a conversation about that.
I know that we have discussed in the past the limitation, and we had looked at what the City of Gilroy was doing. I think that you had brought that up. I think their limit is something like 750 per, and so we were going to discuss that at a future time, but does anybody have, I mean, I know for me, a mayor's campaign is a little different than a council person's, because you are covering an entire city, and it's very, very expensive. And given that you have to run every two years, that's a lot of campaign funding. And when you lower that limit down, as low as it was lowered, it made it very difficult, even though there were hundreds of contributions. I still ended up investing quite a bit, and I, you know, to have to do that every two years. So for me personally, I think that it is a little low, and would like to see it more along the lines of something like Gilroy does. So that's just my, my two cents. Any comments?
I would like to see the, the dollar. So I came in in 2020. I was class of 2020. The, we had the $99 on up report. That's what I used. I thought it was, it was burdensome enough, because, I mean, well, I don't know, I was just doing a whole campaign by myself, so it was like, but I think the dollar and the 250, that's, they need to be changed. I would like to go back to the 99, and Gil, if 750 is good for everybody else, I think that's good for me, too. I'd like, actually, I'd like to go from the dollar to $99, just like the state. And also, if we're going, if we, if we want to cap, then put $1,000. That's it.
Anything to add, Councilmember Burns?
Yes, of course, Mayor. Thank you. So I'm good with increasing based on what the region is doing. And so for me, I'd really, before we set limits or expectations, I would, I would like to see us know what Gilroy's doing, know what Morgan Hill's doing, know what Seaside's doing, just, you know, maybe the 20 local jurisdictions, and, and then find some common ground in there. I, I'll be, I'll, I'm going to be quiet at that point. I just think that would, that would be more, more wise. Thank you.
I would agree. I would agree.
Yeah. So, yes, that's.
Okay. So it sounds like there's consensus for us to bring back what local jurisdictions are doing with respect to campaign contribution limits and reporting requirements.
Yes.
Okay.
To revisit it, yes.
We will.
Okay. All right. So we're going to move on then to the consent agenda, and do any members of the council have brief questions on any of the items that they'd like to ask, or Councilmember Burns, brief questions?
Brief is a pretty broad term. No, Mayor, I, I don't want to pull any. Thank you.
You don't want to pull each night. And any others?
We had the, the council, the Arts and Council Commissioner, she's still here, or did she leave?
No, she left.
Okay. Never mind.
Okay. All right. Do we have any public comment on the consent agenda?
Mayor Casey, there are no public comments for the consent agenda items.
So if we don't have any items we wish to pull, then can I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
All right. Motion carries for zero. All right. Yeah, we're going to move on to public input. Sorry for those of you who have been waiting on that. So this is the time for anyone in the audience to speak on any item, not on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speaker cards are available in the lobby and are to be completed and given to the city clerk before speaking. When the city clerk calls your name, please come to the podium and state your name and city for the records and please, and speak to the city council. If you're joining us via Zoom, please click on the bottom of your screen to raise your hand. If you're joining us via Zoom using a cell phone, please press star nine. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes with a maximum of 30 minutes per subject. Please note, state law prohibits us from discussing or taking action on any items that are not on the agenda. So do we have public comment?
Yes, Mayor Casey. The first public speaker is Clark Stone.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Clark Stone. I reside in Pisinas, in the county. I'm speaking tonight to express my support for the city council's recent decision to abide by its previous agreement to extend wastewater services to the new Gavlin Campus at Fairview Corner, at Corners. The new Gavlin Campus is an important part of Hollister and San Bernardino County's future, and the council's decision reflects that. And it's much appreciated. And I think what we will see as a result of this expansion of the campus is that it will provide an option for many of our young people to pursue higher education here in the county without having to leave the area, which will hopefully help retain them. Finally, I wanted to also thank Mayor Casey for her efforts on social media to present the facts surrounding this decision and to address muscular misinformation that was floating around with respect to the decision on the sewer hookup as well as the housing in the area. This sort of misinformation seems to take hold in many instances and gets a life of its own, but the, the sort of factual information presented by the mayor goes a long way towards addressing the issue and providing the factual-based information that people need to understand how the council is functioning. And finally, I'd like to express my disappointment that some in our community would choose to engage in a campaign of misinformation and manipulation rather than a factual-based discourse on this issue. As this council is well aware, both Hollister and the county have numerous public issues that require addressing and solutions. And these sort of campaigns of misinformation do nothing to address these issues, and in fact, are counterproductive and bring no solutions to the table. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next public speaker is Cherie Ashley.
Good evening. My name is Cherie Ashley, and this has been an interesting evening. I've never been here before, but it's been, you guys are, are great. It's nice to see everybody come together and work together. I am the owner of Bright Future Recovery, which is a substance abuse treatment program here in Hollister. I have been working very closely with the city for, gosh, I'm going to say close to three years now, on getting a CUP permit. So originally, we were counted as the county, and then when I started noticing, like, if we needed to call law enforcement, then the police would come out. So then I noticed that I might need a CUP because I'm over six beds, I'm 12 beds. So then that turned into this whole thing of when Award Homes was around my property, I've been working closely with them for the past, gosh, maybe four years, even longer, that we want to improve our property. So I've been working great with one of the workers here, Erica, and so I've spent a lot of money going back and forth, traffic surveys, trying to do everything I can to improve my property and get the CUP from 12 beds to 18 beds. So it was suggested that I come here to see if I can get an application fee waived for this specific plan amendment. I don't really even know what that is. But right now, I'm working really, really hard to get this done, and it's been costing an arm and a leg. I'm doing everything that I can to make the improvements needed to my property, be able to provide the services that are needed in this county. We've helped thousands of people over the past nine years. We're currently working on getting our Medi-Cal license, which will be another wonderful thing for our county, as there's not really many services here. And really, it's just to improve the aesthetic of the property. So I don't know if anyone's familiar with Bright Future Recovery, but right now it's just a single home, and so we're trying to, I don't want to use the word expand too much, because really, it's just more of a space for like our clients to be able to get their individual and group sessions, because right now it's all being done in one spot. So we have a really beautiful campus that's already designed, but we've kind of put a hold on it because it's just costing more and more and more money. The traffic surveys, I've done three of them now privately and through the city. So at this time, I'm hoping that this part can be waived, because it's just another costly fee. And then once this is done, hoping that my plans can get approved, and then I'm back here again with more details on what the project is and further discussion. So, but, but for now, that's pretty much all it is.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that it? Okay.
The next public, the next public speaker is Ted Davis.
Well, I really hope you can help the previous speaker. That sounds really great. We really need that. I haven't heard of that project yet. I had come here tonight just to address the mayhem of, of the last meeting, and I had something I specifically wrote that I wanted to address, Roland, personally. So I, I will either submit that through email or be back at the next meeting. And other than that, it's nice to see everyone getting along, and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
The next public speaker is Bob Tiffany.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Councilmembers. Some of my remarks are, are directed toward an empty seat here. And it is interesting, this is one of the, the most well-run meetings we have seen in a long time. I wonder why. At any rate, I am a longtime Hollister resident and businessperson, now retired, and a past Samyo County supervisor. I know full well how difficult the job you all have. As elected officials, you have a major decisions to make that impact the direction of our community and its citizens, and that's not easy, even community and its citizens and that's not easy, even under the best of circumstances. So I wanted to applaud the decisions the majority of you made at the last meeting regarding wastewater treatment in our community under what were anything but the best of circumstances. In a packed and very vocal audience that has been, had been fed falsehoods about the impact of what you were deciding, you made the correct call on both the necessary upgrade to the Hollister wastewater treatment plant in the agreement with Sunny Slope Water. In spite of what many claimed, it had nothing to do with expansion of the plant or with increasing development in the city of Hollister. It had everything to do with maintaining the proper functioning of a valuable asset of the city as well as making the environmentally sound decision on wastewater treatment for already approved projects in the county. I know personally what a significant decision this was. As not only a county supervisor last year, but also the LAFCO chair, I was heavily involved in discussions to find a way forward that made the most sense for our entire county when it comes to wastewater treatment. Although growing, this is still a small community and it has never made any sense to me to look at decisions such as this without taking into account what's best for everyone in the cities of Hollister and San Juan Batista as well as in the county. The wastewater treatment plant was built back in 2008 to be a regional plant. It was always intended to serve the entire community and the decision you made at your last meeting is moving us toward that finally becoming a reality. With that said, I sincerely hope that future decisions that come before you will be able to be addressed in a much more civil manner than what was witnessed at that meeting. I understand that there are going to be disagreements among you. It's a good thing to hear differing opinions from not only your fellows council members, but from the public. But what is not acceptable is for any one of you to make unfounded accusations, untruthful and misleading statements, or worse of all, personal attacks. As an elected official, each of you have a responsibility to behave professionally and to treat each other with respect, even when you feel very passionately about your point of view. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next public speaker is Elia Salinas.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council Members, and thank you to Clark Stone and to Bob Tiffany. I agree with the sentiments there. I would like to start off with the grand jury report and the fact that it kinda stains or tries to stain a mark against the leader of the fire department who was commit, serving the arm, fulfilling his commitment to the armed services, the division of the army and it's, it's, it's kind of disappointing that the staff made a complaint and it was, it came out into the grand jury report when he's just being his, committing, he committed, made a commitment to the United States service and then that's what he was doing. The decorum at the last meeting was lost. You have a code of ethics that was lost and basically the attention that it brought to the city was more of an embarrassment than anything. It was based on intentional misinformation that individuals showed up here to voice their opinion on something that they actually did not even have the correct information as to why they were here. And I would like to address, to supervise, I'm sorry, that's tomorrow morning, Councilman Rick Perez, who has led a sober life for decades. He is well-respected in this community and he is looked up by a lot of people in this community for the life that he currently leads in a sober life. And for Councilman Rosendres to come out and intentionally make some ugly remarks about Mr. Perez is really, really offensive and completely disrespectful to the position of a city council member. And I would like to read a small paragraph from the, the Board of Vocational Nursing and Psychiatric Technicians and the board, it's an explanation of violation. The board received a notification from the Department of Justice indicating that you, Roland Rosendres, were arrested on or about May 19, 2016 for California Penal Code Section 2.273.5, open parentheses, A dash, closed parentheses, inflict corporal, corporal injury on a spouse or cohabitant and for California Penal Code Section 273, A, open parentheses, B, close parentheses, willful cruelty to a child.
Thank you.
Mayor Casey, those are all the public comments we have.
Okay. All right, let's move on then to our city manager report.
Nothing to report at this time, Madam Mayor.
Do we have any training or conferences to report on? Chief, do you have anything tonight?
No, I don't.
Any others? Yes.
I'd like to just take a moment to recognize Tina Garza in the audience. Tina recently completed her IMCA leadership training as well as has recently completed her first year of a two-year process for a director's school to help support with the Parks and Rec Division. So wanted to take a moment to highlight the accomplishments of Ms. Garza.
If anyone, nothing else, then I think we'll move on to our public hearing. Item E1, it's an ordinance number 1237, ordinance of the City Council of the City of Hollister amending the zoning ordinance to repeal section 17.24.240 Plan Development Permits and replace with a new chapter 17.66 Plan Developments. Then we have the staff report.
Good evening. This item, the Plan Developments, has been reviewed by the Planning Commission several times. The Planning Commission reviewed it during two study sessions. The first one was really to give a background on what a plan development is, discuss how other cities do plan developments and get feedback from the Planning Commission on how they'd like to move forward in amending our plan development section of the zoning ordinance as part of the zoning ordinance overhaul. Following the first study session, the Planning Commission had a few comments, questions. Staff brought it back to another study session. We felt would be better to kinda flesh it out a little bit more. Based on the feedback received from those two study sessions, we then drafted the, the draft ordinance that you have before you tonight. It was reviewed once during a study session. The Planning Commission during that study session didn't really have any feedback on it, but asked a couple of questions. And so based on those questions, we slightly amended the, the ordinance to a better, provide better clarity. And then on May 25th, the Planning Commission reviewed the draft ordinance and adopted a resolution recommending city council approval of the ordinance. A plan development is a flexible zoning tool that redefines the land uses or development standards that would otherwise apply to a property. The zoning ordinance is very rigid in the way it's written. It gives a list of setbacks that apply to all properties, for example, in the R1. It gives you a list, the lot coverage and other sort of development standards that everyone needs to apply to. Likewise, for land uses, the, the, the land use section or the permitted uses is very rigid. It's a list of uses and then it's whether they're permitted, conditionally permitted or not permitted. And if a use isn't within that list, it's just not permitted. A plan development is a, is a flexible tool that developers use to plan for large developments and then they can establish their site-specific uses, the layout of the site and other sort of things that really apply to their unique needs and the type of development that they would like to construct. Some examples that are quite common are the example on the left. It's a very, instead of the 20-foot setback that you'd normally see, we have a very small setback. And then to go along with that, the garages are in the back and there's a front porch patio area for people to use and activate the street. Another example, the one on the right, is where you might have some small-scale living type units. Bungalows are a good example, where you have, again, no setback really in the front, but you have an activated walkway in the front and you have your garages in the back. Other type examples that you might see are for larger-scale properties. They wanna focus, for example, if it's mixed use, they might wanna focus more intense residential units towards a certain part of the property. They maintain the density wide, but they're shifting where it goes on their property for large-scale properties. Or sometimes you might have a property that is environmentally sensitive and so where they're, whether, where they would normally have very large lot sizes, they need to shrink them down to protect those sensitive areas and still maintain that density that's allowed under the general plan. The existing plan development regulations for the city of Hollister are located in 17.24.240 of the zoning ordinance. The way this section of the code is, is written is very confusing. It does conflict with other sections of the zoning ordinance. It's limited to residential projects only, so commercial or industrial couldn't take advantage of it. And it's typically only used with the performance overlay zoning district. There are a few exceptions, but for the most part, it's just used with that performance overlay zoning district. So based on feedback from the Planning Commission, the way that the new chapter has been written is that it would now apply to any project which is on a project size wide that's over an acre. It would apply for residential as well as commercial and industrial, so it would expand the use of where it's allowed throughout the city. Someone could also, as a pre-zone, request the plan development for their property. And again, it's allowed for all properties regardless of their general plan land use If a person would, or if a developer would like to have the plan, the plan development under the way it's written now, they would have to also provide a substantial public benefit in exchange for the relief they're asking from the typical zoning ordinance standards. The substantial benefit is defined in the draft language, but what it is, is basically they're going to provide a unique feature to the city that we otherwise wouldn't have. So for example, they might provide affordable housing or they might provide a unique landscape feature, park area within a residential development and then around that park area, they're putting eateries or small-scale restaurant uses to then activate this kind of park that they've planned for within their development. The zoning ordinance is specific on the deviations that would be allowed and these are very typical, with the exception of a few with what we have right now, but it would be height, lot size, the dimensions of your lot, the setbacks, open space requirements, lot coverage, the dwelling unit type, shared parking, and then if there was any other sort of unique aspect that they were requesting, we could look at that as well. That does require, of course, that the Planning Commission and city council deem that appropriate. Under the new regulations, a plan development could include additional uses or new uses. They could include uses that are established for an underlying zoning district. They could use a list that's not listed in the zoning ordinance, but which is compatible with the general plan land use designation for the site. An example for that could be an auction yard in, in industrial area or if you had a residentially-zoned property, but they wanted to do something where we had an artist's studio and an artist's garden and they wanted houses. Those mix of uses aren't necessarily allowed under the zoning ordinance, but you could deem it appropriate. It's at your discretion. Accessory uses and multifamily structures in a single-family residential development. What we mean by that is they still have to meet the density, but they may choose to, in order to hit that maximum density, have a few attached units in addition to single-family, for example, in the, in the R1 district. A plan development cannot be used to lower or increase the required density of the general plan, of the general plan, so they couldn't come and ask for a R1 development that goes under that or multifamily that goes under that minimum designation. They could not eliminate the commercial component for a mixed-use zoned property or mixed-use designated property. They could not ask for the requirements for properties zoned downtown mixed use to be waived, so the design standards that we have, they could not ask that those go away. They could not request for a single-family in the medium-density or high-density land uses. They could not reduce or remove the requirements of any, any adopted design guidelines or standards that the city might have. And they could not request the reduction or removal of any design or preservation requirements for historical structures. So how would people establish a plan development under the new regulations? The project would have to be rezoned to plan development as, as written in this. They would pick their underlying zoning designation that allows us to fall back just in case we need to. And it, the zoning map would be amended to show the property as plan development and then we'd note the application number for ease of future use if someone calls and asks what the regulations are for their property. They can see it on the city's website under the zoning map or in the GIS and they can call us and we can easily find it for them. So for, for the proposed process, anyone who qualifies, so they're over an acre in size, would apply. They would submit their plans to, to the planning division showing their desired standards for their site. They would have to identify the public benefit. Staff would then review to ensure that it complies with the ordinance as well as the general plan and any specific plan if there is one. Sequel review would be conducted if needed and if it, if any sort of environmental documentation was needed, we would then perform that. Once the project is ready, the plan development portion would go to the Planning Commission for review during a public hearing. They would then make a recommendation to the city council. The city council would then be the ultimate decider on whether or not to adopt the plan development rezone. So that's the same thing. After it's approved, once everything has taken effect, the, as I mentioned, it would be rezoned. We'd note it everywhere with the, with the file number, so we can easily find those different standards. Development of the site, if they chose to, could be phased over time. Maybe they have a large property and as part of that plan development, they have selected a phasing plan, could then be built in over time. And that all development is then required to conform to that plan development once it's approved. As there always is in life, sometimes we need to make modifications, so we have two pathways for modifications. One is a minor adjustment or clarification. We could find 10 years down the road that something maybe doesn't make a little sense. The property owner or the HOA or whoever it could be could then apply to the director to clarify that for, for a minor clarification. If there was a, if prior to construction, there was some sort of minor modification that needed to be made, something might need to shift slightly or a minor setback might need to be increased or decreased, whatever the case could be, the Planning Commission could then approve it during a public hearing as long as they find that the amendment substantially complies with the provisions of the plan development and does not change the intent or development capacity of the development. So if someone wanted to, then I have approval, my plan development says I'm gonna have 500 units and they wanna then have 600 units, that's not a minor change. If there are any significant changes, they would then have to go to the city council, so they'd go back through the process again to get the plan development reviewed. So in conclusion, the Planning Commission reviewed the amendments to the plan development several times. We incorporated direction from the Planning Commission into the draft, Chapter 17.66. The new ordinance has been drafted to clearly outline the process and supplemental requirements. By requiring a rezone for plan developments, the use of the plan development tool will be expanded throughout the city. And by allowing people to deviate from the set standards within the zoning ordinance, it is more appropriate for the city council in these cases to make sure that this is still in line with the way the city wants to develop and that can be done through the rezone process. And by having this new process where we've expanded it, we're really expanding it to more people that could benefit throughout the city, not just single-family residential development, but others who may have a unique development for the city that would be an attractive addition, but that our zoning ordinance really just isn't designed to allow. That concludes my presentation. I'm sure you have many questions.
Council member Burns, would you like to start?
My, my gosh, staff's reading my mind and the mayor too. Thank you for the presentation and, and the staff report was very helpful. I'm, I'm tickled pink to see that we're gonna update some things that had been needed for years. And so- And so I do have a few questions. In reading the staff report, I understand that if, if the council moves forward to approve this, there would be no change in the current fees that are charged for this process. Is that correct?
That's correct, with the exception of two new fees, and that's the item after this. I can talk about it more if you want, but it is the item after this one. But the existing plan development fee of, it's like nine thousand nine hundred something dollars, it's not proposed to change. We feel that by actually kind of having this process, which is more clearly defined, whereas the existing process is a little confusing, we think we'll streamline it for people, which should make it faster and then cause less staff time.
Thank you. Have, have we received any input from the development community or the BIA on this?
So the BIA is notified of this item, including the fees. The staff report for the, for the study sessions, as well as the public hearings, is placed on the website. I have spoken with every applicant that I have, and I know other planners have been speaking with their applicants, to describe this change, and we've provided them with staff reports. Most people, or everyone I've talked to is in favor, but getting people to, or in favor to show up at public hearings is not as easy as people who are, are not in favor, but everyone I've spoken to is excited about it and is looking forward to it. I have a few applicants that are not applying yet because they'd like to take advantage of this. It would make a better project for them. And the reason that this got moved forward out of the Phase Two of the zoning ordinance is, at the time we'd started work on this, we had identified several projects that would have benefited, but they were already in the planning review process, and they didn't want to wait. They were unsure if this would get approved. And so the outcome of those projects would have been better, but they unfortunately didn't want to wait. But we don't want to make anyone else wait. I have a few people that are waiting currently to see the outcome of this, and then they'll apply. And I know there are other people that really want to take advantage of it, that I've discussed with.
Okay. And, and so will this have any impact on ADUs or JADUs or vice versa?
So the ADU and JADU law is entirely separate from this. If someone was in a plan development and wants a JADU or ADU, they, they follow state law. This, the plan development doesn't trump them. There are older plan developments in the city that were a rezone prior to the 2080 update, so we do have those, and they all follow the state law and the, the section of the zoning ordinance that we recently adopted. If someone, as part of their plan development, also wanted to include some ADU, JADUs, they could do so with, as part of that process.
Okay. In, in your presentation tonight, I, I didn't catch this when I was reading it, but you brought it up, the deviations, and, and I guess the one concern I would have would be, I really wouldn't want to see people be allowed to deviate from open space requirements. And can you speak to that, please?
So within our code, we have a requirement for multifamily, well, for single-family, but it's mostly multifamily where we see the issue, is we have a requirement for both private and common open space. For some developers, that's very difficult to do, depending on the design of the building and the location of the building. So where they might have a zero-foot setback in the downtown, that, that becomes very difficult. So where we see it is a, asking to lower it or to shift it to other areas, and that's part of the plan development. That's something we currently see today, so it's not anything new.
Okay. And, and as I heard you say, when these things move forward, they'll go to the planning commission and then come to council for final approval?
Yes, and it's entirely discretionary. So if someone was proposing, let's say, a, a, I am a single, we have single-family residences, and we want a two-foot front yard setback, and if you felt that was inappropriate, that is a discretionary item you can, you can.
Okay. And as I understand, this is intended to replace existing code. And so on page two thirty-two of the staff report, which was the proposed Section seventeen dot sixty-six dot zero seven zero, which talks about concessions, you call it something different, was that part of the pre-existing code, or is this something new, where different accommodations?
Are you talking about the public benefit?
Yes, yeah, exactly, exactly.
So the public benefit is something new.
I love it.
The way the code works right now is someone asks for something, and they get it. So I am, I'm a developer, and I am asking for, I have my, my property is under the performance overlay zoning district, which is a twenty-five-hundred-square-foot lot, so it's smaller than a normal R1. They can't meet the setbacks. It's, would result in a little postage-sized stamp house. So I am a developer, I have my lot zoned for that, and I would like a ten-foot front yard setback with, with the garage at fifteen, and I want a rear of ten. That is usually just granted. There isn't a lot of discussion that goes into it, mostly because with the way the plan developments work now, is it just comes along with a map. So we don't see the way it looks. We don't have a feel for the design of the area. We, it's just lines, lines on a piece of paper. The way we've designed it is, if you are asking for a waiver from a standard that we have, it should be for a, a unique reason. It ju, just shouldn't be because I want it, or I want to build a five-thousand-square-foot house. What does it benefit, in what way does it benefit the city? So that's where the, the, the submittal requirements help us out with, and then the public benefit. So if you want those reduced setbacks, what can you give the city? It could be an amazing landscaped path throughout the development. That's a, that's a public benefit. It could be a plaza, or a unique courtyard that could be used in the downtown by anyone. So that's what we're asking for, kind of, you're gonna, we're gonna give, it's a give and a take. We're going to give you this reduction in whatever you're asking, what is it that you're going to give the city?
So could that also include something like public art?
Public art, and public art, I believe, is on here, yes. So there's a number of things. There's enhanced, enhanced architectural designs, so they're going to give us something totally unique, not seen anywhere, exciting materials, and exciting design. It's something so unique that we say, yes, we'll give you this reduced setback, or whatever it could be. But it really is, how does this project then benefit the city? In what way? And that's what we're asking people to do.
Thank you. That concludes my questions, Mayor.
Councilmember Perez?
I just want to thank you for bringing this up, and it's like, I'm so happy with staff, with all that we're doing. It's just, thank you so much. It's, this is opening up things to, we're finding ways to get things done, not making excuses why we can't get them done. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Yes, I just want to say thank you for the well-written report and all the attachments with all the information. It was done very nicely, so thank you for taking the time. I, I know it was a lot of work, so definitely helps with just minimizing all, a lot, well, not all questions, but a lot of our concerns, and definitely the history helps, so just want to say thank you very much for the good work.
Yes, thank you. After listening to you, I feel a little better because I've been trying to wrap my head around this for a while, and listening that you had to have several planning commission study sessions, I don't feel quite so bad. But I do have some questions. So you've been calling this planned developments, and when I was kind of looking around on, you know, trying to find out more about planned developments, I came across planned unit developments. Are we talking about the same thing, or are they different?
It's an interchangeable term, depending on the city. A city will use planned unit development, or a city will use plan development. Plan unit development is not necessarily a more hip term. The unit has fallen by the wayside, I think, because now, whereas it used to be mostly a residential thing, maybe thirty, forty years ago, more cities are allowing it for flexibility with commercial because, again, the zoning ordinance is so rigid, it could prevent those sorts of unique developments you might see, where you have the shopping center and the new mall-type shopping center in San Ramon, where they wrap around the outside, they have the plaza on the inside, it's two stories. These are things that the zoning ordinance doesn't typically allow.
Okay. So that kind of brings me to my next question, because when I was reading about planned unit developments, they started talking about HOAs. So I'd like to understand what that means in, in terms of, you know, because you're talking about things like plazas, and you're talking about, and if there are HOA fees that residents who maybe buy into a town, they're going to be paying large fees to pay for shops and plazas? I just want to understand.
Okay, so with any, with any development that occurs in this city, in commercial and industrial, I would, I don't believe you'd ever find an HOA-type situation. But for any residential development, for example, you buy a condo, there is an HOA. They are taking care of the maintenance of the outside, the maintenance of your parking structure, all the things that are within their purview. You do tend to see them sometimes in single-family developments, depending on if the streets are public or private, and depending on what amenities they provide for the residents. In the situation of a planned development, you are not forced to have an HOA. Now, what, what I can't tell you now is, depending on what their makeup is of what they want to do, my example of, if you had a residential development, and you had a park in the center, and then you had little shops around it, that's probably going to be owned by someone else, so they would split that off. It's owned and operated by someone else. You wouldn't like, usually see that under an HOA. As they maybe plan for other things, we would have to know what they're doing. We can talk about whether it's city-maintained or not city-maintained, and it's really hard to say without, there's so many, so many ways that something could go with this, that it's hard to say. But what we would probably find most with a, with a public benefit is affordable housing, public art, a unique design and structure is probably what we're going to see more of, or enhanced architecture, I would say.
Okay, okay, I see, I think I see where you're going. So it isn't necessarily that there will be a HOA fee. I just, you know, we're trying to make things more affordable for folks here, and I just would hate to see, because what I've read is that cities do like this, because it kind of almost, in some instances, can replace CFDs, as far as who's managing, maintaining, whatever.
Again, it's more a function of the developer, so it's really hard to say, and I could see where in some cities that the HOA would be easier for them, but depending on the type of development, you're probably going to have an HOA anyways, if it's a multifamily type, or it could be an apartment, and then obviously you have an owner entity. So it really is hard to say, but what I would say for probably a single-family where we're not going to see HOAs, is that they're going for an enhanced architecture, or, or affordable housing in order to get this sort of benefit.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. All right, do we have public comment?
Yes.
And for the record, this is the opening of the public hearing.
I'm sorry, I always forget that part.
Thank you. The first public comment we have is from Robert Stimson on Zoom.
Hi, is this, maybe I'm a little early, I'm, I'm actually waiting for the comments section?
That is this portion of it. Are you, for the planned development, planned development ordinance?
No, just, just general.
Oh, that occurred earlier in the meeting, sir.
Okay, I didn't understand, so my fault.
No problem.
Okay, I'll, next meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Stimson. The next public speaker we have is from Dennis Martin.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Dennis Martin, speaking on behalf of the Building Industry Association of the Bay Area. And I will be commenting on items one and two here, so just to cover the next item as well. BIA Bay Area largely approves of the efforts to expand, clarify, and streamline the PD permit process in Hollister. While we always have concerns with new fees, the PD permit is a powerful tool for the city and developers to address many issues that do not neatly fit under rigid zoning rules, providing opportunity for creativity and flexibility in all types of development. This PD update could be an important improvement on the status quo. BIA does have concerns, however, with Section seventeen sixty-six point oh seven oh, substantial public benefit in exchange for a PD. This section allows for extraction of potentially exorbitant demands by the city that may have little nexus with the project. Projects already pay hefty impact fees to the city for parks, libraries, community centers, public art, traffic, et cetera, et cetera. And this may just add more burden to the project through an un, an unstudied impact. However, what we really see this as an opportunity to comment on some other issues that the city is having here. And I draw your attention to our August seventh letter that, that comments on the adequate noticing of new or increased fees. The city is required by the state to notify BIA, or any other party, for that matter, that notifies the city at least fourteen days in advance of adopting a new or increased fee, and to provide access to materials that support the new or increased fee in advan, in advance. Now, staff provided notice on the item. We really appreciate that, by the way. But the materials were not provided as requested, and so the item was continued to tonight. We do appreciate the efforts by staff to follow state law on this issue, and want to thank you for, for working on this. The absence of the fee notice is, has, was extremely problematic back in June 2021, when the city council adopted new and increased service fees as part of an across-the-board fee structure without notifying BIA in advance. These fees increased, especially the building permit fees, by a factor of four, and increased all fees across the board, and resulted in builders paying more than double the fees paid in neighboring jurisdictions. We provided a peer review of the Willdan Study and of building permit fees in neighboring jurisdictions, and we have included these reviews in our correspondence to you.
Thank you.
We hope you'll notice that, that fees are lower in all jurisdictions surrounding Hollister.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Mayor Casey, those are all the public comments we have for this item.
Okay, do we have some discussion? Councilmember Burns, would you like to start?
Mayor Casey, if you could close the public hearing.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Hearing is closed.
Thank you, Mayor. So I, I did hear what the BIA just said in regards to the Section seventeen dot sixty-six dot zero seven zero, and, and I, I understand, but I also heard the staff presentation that as these things move forward, they will be, first of all, either approved or rejected by the planning commission, and then by the council. And so I do think that we can absolutely take that into consideration, if they're reasonable requests or not, and, and I believe staff will be reasonable, but I think there's a check and balance in regards to that. With regards to the mayor's question on what we're calling this, I, I just want a clarification. If we pass this tonight, will we be hip, or will we not be hip? Because...
I think we'll be more hip.
All right. Yeah, I just wanted clarity. And so I, I'm, I'm very happy to say yes on this. It's, it's overdue, in my opinion, and, and I'd also like to see a greater emphasis in more neighborhood community parks, parklets, whatever you want to call it. So thank you, Mayor. Those are my comments, and I'd make a motion to approve.
All right, I imagine we want to make more comments, but is there a second on the motion? Or do we want to continue discussion first?
I second.
Okay, did you have anything?
No, you know what, I, I just love this, I love the way staff has taken us, our, our city, and I'm just happy with everything.
Vice Mayor?
No, I think, I think the idea is great, and I think it's, it's also, thank you for reaching out to the developers. I'm glad that they received notice so that they could provide an analysis of some of their concerns. I, I agree with Councilmember Burns that we will have two opportunities to look at what's reasonable, and I know that there's a lot of hesitation to make sure that there's due process, so I, I think that that was covered by the staff. And I'll say my, my comments about the fees for the next item. And I just want a friendly reminder, District Three Park, one day. Thank you.
Also, I just want to say thank you. I, you know, always have concerns, but I really feel like this has some real potential for our city and, and allows so much flexibility. And again, because the planning commission and the council are both going to be looking at it, we can, you know, kind of see, see how we do with it, and if, if there's changes that need to be made, then we'll make changes. So I am also supporting this. So if we would like to, if there's no more comment, then I would say, let's take a vote. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. All right, motion carries for zero. All right, now we're, we're going to move on to Item E2, which is the, the fee schedule around the planning, plan developments.
So since you have adopted it, the second part of this request is for two new fees. One, as I mentioned, we're not proposing to change the existing fee for plan developments, that fee would remain the same. Like I mentioned, with the streamlined process, with new procedures and rules that we'll have in place, we think it will speed the process up, make everything more clear for both staff and the new procedures and rules that we'll have in place, we think it will speed the process up, make everything more clear for both staff and the developer. And so despite the fact that it's now going to have an extra step where we go to council and have an extra meeting and a staff report, we feel like the same amount should still be charged because we'll have a staff savings from what we usually see right now. As far as the other two fees go, there's two new permit, there's two new types now within the plan development. So we have the minor, minor approval that can be approved by the director, and we have the approval that can be, that needs to go to the planning commission. So with regards to the um, the uh minor amendment or clarification through the Development Services Director, what staff did was we kind of calculate, looked at what the path would be for something like that to be approved. And so what we're recommending is that that fee be the same that we charge right now for an administrative permit review. Uh, the reason that we're recommending that that be the same, so that fee is um one thousand six hundred and three dollars and ninety cents. The reason that we're recommending that that um be the same is that the process will most likely be the same. So someone will come in and apply, we're making a file, it gets routed to a planner, the planner is doing some background research, some study into the situation. And then it most likely, most likely would have to be routed to the city's DRC just to make sure that it doesn't raise any red flags with anyone. Um, whatever they're proposing, we want to make sure fire is okay with it, the police department, and everyone. So it will go through that review. Um, as what happens with most uh permit submittals is the first time we, the first time it comes in, we have some comments or we need some more information, they get a letter back from staff. Let's say they resubmit the second time. Then if we review it again, make sure it's complete, make sure all of our questions are answered, and then we would issue the approval, which then gets written up and filed. That is the exact same process that we have right now for admin permit review. It's going to be the same for this permit, so we think it should just be the same. Um, just across the board for consistency, same process, same fee. With regards to the planning commission review of something, they are going to go through that process, but then what we would have is a little bit higher scrutiny. It's probably a more tricky situation, or they're asking for something, we really need to make sure is this something that's covered under this request? Uh, what sort of other items are going on? Because again, it's not going to be just something minor. And then again with that, now we have staff writing a resolution, we have staff writing a staff report, we have all the work that goes in for something like that. So for that, what we're just recommending is uh half the fee of the existing plan development fee. So it would just be cut in half to really cover that additional time staff is most likely going to be spent due to the complexity of the issues, and then obviously the meeting that would come for that. So that fee would be four thousand five hundred and ten dollars and fifty cents, which is half the existing plan development fee. And those are the only two fees that we're going to have that we're proposing.
Councilmember Burns, do you have questions?
Uh, reading my mind again, Mayor. Thank you. Do we have a uh current fee study that we arrived at the pre-existing cost forum? Or how did we arrive at these numbers?
So the existing fees that are charged within the plan, or, sorry, that are charged within our fee schedule were studied, reviewed, processes were identified, staff time spent on it um, with the process that goes through that. So all of that was done why, a while ago. I know that we are currently looking at amending the fees and maybe looking at doing things differently. So obviously, if that happens, these fees would get changed. This is just sort of an interim. Since we have these two options, we'd like to have a fee in place so that we can charge them to cover staff's time.
So the previous fee schedule that was adopted, was it, was the study done by a consulting firm or was it done internally? How was that arrived at?
It was uh prepared by Willdan, so it was an external third party.
Okay, so, so we have that. Um, is there, do we actually have an hourly rate as part of that fee study that we would charge for a planner, a senior planner, different line items for our actual costs?
I don't believe there's anything within the fee schedule. I could be wrong. There could be one, but we charge a flat fee. So like some cities do a deposit account and whoever the planner is, each planner has a going rate, so a senior planner has one. And then that gets charged against the deposit account for actual time charge. We just have a flat fee, so it's the average. So staff time could be more, staff time could be less. It's just an average since that's the application fee that we've established.
Uh, thank you. So, so it's not um willy-nilly that we're, we're coming up with these numbers. I, I, I would say, my, my understanding is the goal is to be budget neutral. We're not out to make money, but we're certainly not out to subsidize development either. And, and so I, I guess my comfort level would be more to develop a time and materials process whereby we actually uh cover the amount of true cost involved in this process versus um just, and, and I won't say arbitrarily because it seems like there's a lot of thought that's gone into this, but I think there's a risk. Uh, and, and the risk is we either come in uh under the hourly rate and in essence then we're making money on this one element, or we have an actual specific hourly rate and then we bill for true time involved. And so um, those are just my thoughts, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Press, any questions?
More of a comment. The um, how, how do our rates compare to everybody? I mean, local agencies? Because I, 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 I'm confused on that, and I don't know if you guys can send me something or provide me, provide us with some data on that, because it's like, I hear that we are like way up here.
So Christie could probably speak better than I could, but I did look at fees charged as part of this whole overhaul we've been doing. I have been looking at processes, fees charged and things. Fees are across the board, very different from city to city to city.
Total.
Some, it looks like they are subsidizing certain things and charging a lot more on others. A lot of cities have gone to the deposit accounts. So you just get that variety with everyone. I can't give you like this is the average that I've noticed. It's kind of just where everyone is so different.
Vice Mayor, do you have questions?
Yes, um, I think mine are very similar. I, I think it looks, it looks like other jurisdictions are a lot lower and their costs are around the same. And then you look at our rates and they're extremely different, extremely higher. And I'm not sure, I think, at least when I first started um with, with city council, we had, we were severely understaffed. We didn't have a director. Um, we had, we didn't have um an automated system, so it created a lot of paper copies. So I'm wondering if the study that we did was done during the time where we were just contracting a lot of work out and the hourly rate or the fees were pretty much based on our contractor uh rate, which is a lot higher than where our staff would be. And if we are, uh, I know we looked at or talked about uh doing a study on our, all of our fees. I think it looks like we should be working towards what others or similar jurisdictions, it does look like our fees are extremely higher than a lot of other neighboring jurisdictions. I'd like to see us look at how we can automate or create efficiencies now that we're, now that we have a director, now that we have at least, not sure if we're fully staffed or not, or working towards that, but if you can talk a little bit about that, and then I'll have a few more questions.
Yeah, no, we'll certainly take a look at it. Um, as for, you know, how the staffing model was when they developed this, the study, I, I was not here during that time. I do know that um, you know, there was a lot of changes in the department. Also, looking at, we are looking at the deposit account. One of the areas that was mentioned is some cities are subsidizing, so it was done on actual costs. But I think as we become more efficient, I think as our code becomes more efficient too, we've done a lot, the planning department has done a lot of work to start trying to streamline the code and make it more user-friendly and staff-friendly, which ultimately would, would result in reductions of staff time needed to accomplish a certain process. So we're, we're going to continue to look at it and look at the fees across the board.
Do we have a time where we, whether that's going to be brought back to council?
We're still working on it. I, I, I'd be uncomfortable committing to, you know, an exact date, but we are working on it and we understand the importance.
Are we looking at like, not, not committing you to anything, but are we looking at like six months or like ten years?
Uh, it's closer to six months and ten years.
Um, I think that was my only concern. I think if I, if, if I were to go to like get something really, really bad example, but this is where my fears are as an, as a, as a human, as an individual, if I were to go somewhere and not really know and understand how much, if you are going to deposit, how much when we know that we have some challenges with automation, with potentially personnel, with having our process streamlined, that, that might be just, you know, in a bottomless pit in terms of how much money I'm going to spend. So I, I also want to make sure that we are conscious about um making sure that we are delivering um in terms of our time efficiencies, communicating, communicating the process, making sure we're problem solving, making sure that we're communicating and uh for us to be able to turn around items in a, in a way that it doesn't, it's not just impacting one person.
So mine is between questions and comments. I mean, echoing what I'm hearing here about the, the fee rates. I mean, for me, the, you know, it kind of raises your eyebrows. I know there was a study done, but when the rates, the fees went up three hundred to four hundred percent, that's just so huge. And so that, of course, you know, makes me concerned. So I, I too would like to see that, that fee study done. And while I, I understand we have this new, you know, PD, not P U D. And we do have a couple of fees we're adding on. I, I, you know, I'd want that to be included as when we're looking at the fee study, I, just to review it. So I mean, I'm okay with going ahead today, but I just, you know, want to make sure that it gets reviewed as well. Because I do, you know, we, we all were provided the information from BIA, looking, when I hear that we're twice as expensive as Los Gatos to, you know, in fees, that kind of gives me pause. So I, I really do want to see this move forward, the fee study, and I know it's going to take time, but it should be a priority, I think. So that's all I have. Um, do we have some public comment?
For the record, this is opening the public hearing.
Oh, God, here we go again. Sorry. Opening the hearing.
Mayor Casey, there's no public comments for this hearing.
Now we're going to close the hearing. All right, so do we have any further comments or are we, are we good to? Yes.
Mayor, I, I would like, I, I've heard the city manager, man, that feels good. Uh, say, say that um, that more like six months as opposed to ten years. Thank you, Councilmember Vice Mayor, for really closing the gap on that for us. I appreciate that. Uh, no pressure, city manager. Um, but um, I would like to put some parameters because I know that we just approved the change uh on the previous item, but we have to do something to move forward financially as, as so. Um, my, it seems like we're already charging the amount they're proposing. It doesn't, and, and, and did I hear that correctly? Are you, are you proposing to increase the cost?
No, so plan development stays the same. We think the streamlined process, it'll cut down on staff time. With the uh director decision, it requires staff time. It mostly resembles what we call the administrative permit review, and then it follows the same process. So that's the fee that we've selected. It requires staff time, uh, work done, letters written, meetings. It requires those things. And then with the planning commission one, it's going to require a meeting. And those are typically, and then typically what you see, so for example, a site and architectural review, that's a higher fee because staff, these tend to be more complicated. Staff spends more time than we would on a minor administrative permit review type project. And then again, with the preparation of a resolution and a staff report and a meeting and all that, there's more staff and time involved. The fees that we're showing here, while plan development is that high fee, and um you would think maybe we'd charge, we'd be recommending higher fees. We think with this zoning ordinance and that amendment, and now with the approval, we're going to have new handouts, new in, uh, a new submittal checklist. It's really going to streamline for the applicant as well for us. So that's why we think these lower, the, the lower fees, for example, the half the plan development fee is appropriate because we're really going to save time for both applicant and staff on that.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. So, so we need to move forward in my mind. And so um, I, I guess I would like to make a motion to approve with an understanding that we will have a fee study uh to council within nine months. I want to be a little more lenient of the city manager. And I know fee studies are achievable within nine months. I've been involved in them. And so um, I think I also would like for staff to track the actual time so that we know where we're hitting. I guess one of my concerns is, doesn't sound like we have anything current to know are we making money on this deal? Are we losing money? My goal would be for us to be budget neutral. And so um I see the director coming to the podium.
Yeah, you've done it.
Through the mayor, if, um, the benefit that we do have on some of these projects is, for example, Erica works for Fourleaf, so she tracks all of her time. So we are able to kind of take a look at even the work that she did on this ordinance um to sort of understand a little bit more about, you know, what, what the staff time has been on there. So that's a benefit that a lot of communities don't have with that. But that's part of what the fee study does as well, is looks at those estimations of time. So I just wanted to give the benefit that we do have with, with especially Erica working on this one.
Right, so on, on, on projects, as they go before community development, I, I would assume there's some sort of a code identified so we can track billable hours, kind of like you would in a law firm?
Uh, yes, for, for the, the, any of the consulting staff. And how a deposit account works is very similar to that. That's something that city staff have a difficult time just kind of getting used to is actually doing what consultants usually do, billing and attorneys do. Um, billing time to projects and remembering to bill that time. Because we're only as good as we're uh able to do. So that's the deposit account where it would be billing time and you would actually have actual account numbers.
And, and then you would draw down from the deposits that are made?
Correct. And then we report back, would report back to the applicant, so they would have constant monthly accounting.
Right, and, and, and so I, I guess the real challenge now, and I know this takes more time, but it would be moving forward to actually have city staff do what we're doing with consultants currently because I, I, number one, I think it'll be very helpful as you go through a fee study to really have time in motion type of data. And so for me, we have to move forward, but, but I would like some parameters so that we, we know how to, how to actually uh break even on the deal. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, if I may, we've been working, Casey and I have been working um with our payroll system to look at the capabilities with using like a project code that you would then assign out to every project that you're working on. Similar to grant allocation or grant appropriations and tracking, similar to that. So we are working on that as well.
Okay, so I think we have a motion. Do we have a second? Oh, sorry.
I wasn't sure if I, I heard, where are we with our staffing level? Because I thought we were transitioning into not utilizing contractors. I know that we have to for some things, but bringing, you know, having uh most of this work be done by staff.
So we're, we're still working on getting fully staffed. We're going through that process. Uh, we have our building official um is open. We're working on our planning manager and a series of other positions. So um, we are not fully staffed from a staffing perspective yet, from city employees.
I think that's going to have a significant impact on your fee study and the rates. So it might be an ongoing process that we just keep evaluating rates moving forward until we're, we're kind of at our baseline, which is having it done in-house, fully staffed.
Okay.
Okay, are we ready? We have a motion. Do we have a second? Would you repeat your motion, sir?
I'll try. So, so to prove as presented with locking down a fee study to be presented to council within nine months from today and to uh have city staff track their time as the city manager had suggested would be my motion.
Can I get a second?
I'd like a friendly amendment.
Uh-oh, okay.
Can we have the fee study come back until we are fully staffed so that we can get an accurate baseline of what the actual fees will be moving forward?
The only problem I would have with that is that, that's an open-ended uh challenge because we've not had the greatest success in filling vacant positions. And, and, and the reality is, whether it be done by city staff or by consulting, when community development is uh overloaded with work, they're going to outsource it anyway. And so I think it would probably be reasonable to just move it forward with that, with that uh option, I guess. I, I'm not sure what I would say is the right word. Also see, uh,
While I, while I appreciate and understand that, I, my understanding is that government, government cannot benefit, we can't profit. So normally, there's a fee study and it's published every year, usually by, by government. So anytime we do fees, there has to be some level of accountability and published every year, normally on our website. So, so that we're not making a profit. If we are making a profit, then we have to have a public hearing, is my understanding, but I could be wrong. but I could be wrong.
Right. I'd ask the city attorney to weigh in on this, please.
Yeah, that's correct. You should be neutral in your collection of fees.
But, but the collection of fees being neutral, again, if we outsource it, that's a true cost to us versus a city staff member. And so those fees are always more significant. But I don't know, I'll, I'll be quiet and let the experts talk.
Yeah. And you don't need, you don't need a fee study every single year. So I just wanted to clarify that point. Casey, did you have something to add?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Casey Storga, Admin Services Director. So one clarifying point on the fee study that's currently being conducted by Will Dan, and will take several months to get to completion. It will gather the data to show our actual cost of doing business as of today, and then it would come back to the city council for a policy decision to set at what level of cost recovery we would hit. So we'll see actual costs, and if they are higher than average because we are using third-party consultants at a higher cost, then that would come back to the city council and say, hey, we want to, through policy, set that at a, you know, 60, 70 percent or comparable agencies. So it would come back with that data.
Okay. So...
Meanwhile, back at the ranch.
No, my, so you made a friendly amendment. Are you withdrawing that or are we?
What's on the table?
Where are we at with this?
I'd like to move forward as proposed. I've heard the vice mayor, and I don't necessarily disagree, but I don't know how we, it seems, having heard the city attorney and our finance director, I think we're in an okay position. I also think this is a short-term solution to a permanent challenge that will be, be fixed, assuming we can get that report back within nine months. And, you know, and I would also say that if we find that we have significantly overcharged, maybe that's an opportunity for the council to weigh in at that point as it relates to monies brought in. And, you know, and the sad part of it is if we've undercharged, I think we have to eat that. And so the fee study in my mind is the critical piece of the conversation. And I'm presuming that we will get a specific hourly rate based on job classification so that we know what to truly bill. And I've heard the city manager say that they will keep track of that stuff, which will assist in the fee study. But I think it will also assist in the defense of the fees that are currently charged while we're in this uncertain period, because I do want staff to be able to move forward. And, and what's the worst-case scenario? We overcharge, we discover that through the fee study, and we refund the money, you know. So for me, I'd like to just move forward with no disrespect intended.
None taken. I, I agree with you. I just want to make sure that what I heard is what we would do. If, if we are overcharging, that we are going to be refunding
Yes.
money. Is that correct, city manager?
We would bring back a report of what our findings are and then have a policy discussion at that time.
Okay.
I just want clarification from the city attorney. If we are profiting, we have to give the money back. It's not a question, right?
Yeah, you legally can't keep the money if you're profiting.
There's your direction. Yes, we would be doing that. All right. So you're, we're going to go ahead with the original motion and you're seconding. And Mr. Perez, right?
Sure.
You're seconding? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Motion carries for zero. All right. Do we want to take a five-minute break, stretch? We could do that? Yep? All right. To ordinance number 1238 and ordinance of the City of Hollister amending section 1512-010 and section 1512-020 of chapter 1512 of the City of Hollister Municipal Code relating to mobile homes and mobile home parks. And we have the staff report?
This is Madam Mayor, members of the city council. This item is an introduction of an amendment for the sections listed. It is simply amending language to clarify definitions, eliminate conflicts, and enhance compliance with existing regulations in regards to mobile home parks. Do you have any questions?
Do we have any questions? No? No questions? Okay.
Actually, just a quick comment. Again, extremely happy and satisfied that staff is going through our stuff, making sure that the verbiage is right, and also providing better services to our community.
I would, I would like to say that Attorney Robert Lomenly worked on this, created most of this report as well, to make it, make sure that we're in compliance with the state regulations and our definitions are consistent.
That's great. Okay. Do we have any public comment on this?
For the record, could you open the public hearing?
Is this a hearing?
It is.
Oh, my goodness.
It's your last one.
Promise? Okay, we're going to open the public hearing.
Mayor Casey, there are no public comments for this item.
Okay, now we're going to close the public hearing. All right. So do we have any further discussion or deliberation? Councilmember Burns, anything?
No, Mayor. I'd just like to move to approve and introduce the ordinance and schedule a second reading and adoption of the ordinance at the September 5th city council meeting.
Second.
Any other discussion? Are we ready to vote? All right. All in favor?
Yes.
Aye. Okay. Motion carries for zero. Okay, we did F1. Let's move on to item F2, which is resolution number 2023-163, resolution of the City Council of City of Hollister authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement with Flock Group, Inc. for gunshot detection services. Now we have the staff report, chief.
Yes, thank you. Once again, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, before you is this item, which is authorizing you to sign the agreement for Flock services and the Raven gunshot detection. As you're well aware, we had two presentations. The city council asked us to bring back this Flock system for one, roughly one square mile of our city, the area that has the most reported historically, historically gunshot crimes reported during the time of the survey. This agreement, which is part of our existing budget, would be with Flock to provide cameras and Raven sound systems to be able to adequately protect that designated area. The agreement is up to 93,500 for the first year and 80,000 for the second year. I have been in communication with Flock. They've advised that every pole that they don't have to put up and use our existing poles is a savings towards the city. That's why the resolution is written in a manner of up to 93, but it could be significantly lower than that. We also have Regional Sales Manager John Anderson on Zoom in case there's any questions, any technical questions from staff.
All right. Do we have any questions from council? Councilmember Burns?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, does Flock have a contingency in the event that the Senate bill moves forward?
I was advised by Regional Sales Manager John Anderson, reminded actually that their, their policy, their program is already at 30 days. So it's purged after 30 days. So even if that passes, they're already in compliance with that.
Okay. That's great news. And so just so I understand the process a little more, we use their service. They provide us with the data. Do we at any point collect data and/or how would a public records request be impacted by this?
They collect the data, and it's only available to us for inquiry. So if there's a crime that's been committed there, or there's a reason why we need the information, we would do an inquiry into the system. And then whatever we find, we can download it. That then becomes part of our records at that point.
Okay. Thank you, chief. Thank you, Mayor. That's my only questions.
Any questions?
So our present city cameras are going to be all in your interconnected?
There's, there's going to be a separation. Our existing network cameras is one system, and these Flock cameras are its own network. There's a potential there. There is a possibility of network being, connecting them, but there would be more fees in regards to that, and we would have to look into it further.
Okay. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, did you have a question?
Very similar. So if we have LEA from...
Very similar. So if we have LEA from other jurisdictions and they have Flock, would they be able to access our Flock or solely within?
Correct. That is one of the benefits of Flock, that if we are looking for a particular vehicle and we see it in our cities, involved in possibly of a crime or suspected being involved in a crime, and other jurisdictions have that same vehicle and they have Flock, they would be able to share that data to see if there's any patterns or any of the same crimes being committed in other cities with Flock.
Yes, we've heard great things from our law enforcement partners on Flock.
All right, if there's no more questions, can we take public comment?
Mayor Casey, there are no public comments for this item.
All right, do we have any further discussion? Councilmember Burns?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to ask the city manager and the chief if the council's supportive. This is great for the identified area, but I would really like to have some sort of an engagement with our schools, because in my mind, our kids are our most valuable resource. And I don't know if it'd be a collaborative partnership with the school districts and the high school, but the more we can reduce the likelihood of bad acts at those locations, I think that would be appropriate. And then earlier in the conversation tonight, we talked about Lad Lane and maybe having cameras placed there as well. And I would even like to expand that conversation for other areas of interest based on the police department's data collection, where it would advance law enforcement and work smarter, not harder, and know that we have limited amounts of law enforcement officers in our community. And so I'd like to propose that as well. Thank you.
If I may add to that.
Yes, please.
One of the great things about Flock is the ability to add to it, and it can come from the private sector. A lot of HOAs have been purchasing their own Flock cameras, and that could be easily integrated into our cameras. I've already spoken to the Hollister School District about a Flock and the potential of them installing Flock at all the schools. And then those cameras and readers can also be connected to the city. It's a way to expand the system without all of it just coming from the city. It could be a partnership with our community with private companies, HOAs, and school districts.
Do you have any further comments, Councilmember?
I'm fine.
And Vice Mayor? It sounds wonderful, and I'm glad we're moving ahead. And I think Flock was a really good choice. They read so many good things. And as Councilmember Morales said, that, you know, there's good reports from other departments. So thank you for moving forward with this. Unless anyone has further comment, I think we can go ahead. And does someone want to make a motion?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four zero. Moving on. So item three, resolution number 2023-164, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hollister adopting the City of Hollister Speed Cushion Policy and Procedures and Traffic Calming Project Policy and Procedures. We have the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. We have a presentation tonight. So, staff was asked to prepare policies for city staff installed traffic cushions as well as a policy for traffic calming projects, the capital improvement projects. Speed cushion policies are very common. The speed cushion policy that you see tonight in the package is based on City of Los Manos. We also have used Federal Highway Administration recommendations and City of Pasadena recommendations. City of Pasadena has had a speed cushion policy in place since the mid 90s. They've updated five times since then. So our policies are a work in progress. So, next slide, please. Oh, what do I have? Oh, the clicker. Traffic calming projects is a combination of measures, which we went over tonight, which were installed at Lad Lane, the measures there, to reduce negative effects of motor vehicle use. It's to alter driver behavior and improve conditions for non-motorized street users, bicycle and pedestrians. So the purpose is to reduce vehicle speeds, reduce collisions, and improve safety. And the larger traffic calming projects will be implemented as part of the city's capital improvement program. Next. Okay, so the traffic calming projects can be a standalone project or part of a street rehabilitation project. They can be initiated by staff or city council, and we want to develop the process to include them in a capital improvement program as well as a budget. So the traffic calming projects are funded by the same funds that are used to do street rehabilitation. And we also can use those same funds to provide matching funds for grants. So the city council will be asked as part of a budget to decide how to use those street rehabilitation funds on what type of projects. We can seek grants. So currently, we're seeking a safe streets for roads for all. So we'd like to use those $300,000 of those funds to fund getting a million dollars to look at our streets. And so those are another use of those street funds. These projects are typically designed by consultants and constructed by contractors. So we also have a speed cushion only policy and procedure. So we're going to ask the public to initiate that process. We will have them approved by city council. And the process will be that we'll set aside a certain amount each year to fund those projects. So where a traffic calming project will cost hundreds of thousands of dollars, the installation of a street cushion is approximately $8,000 per location. So right now, we're proposing them to be paid out of general funds, but we could use those monies. Speaking with the COG today, out of measure G funds, so that's an opportunity. And our staff, our Public Works Department does a great job installing them. The speed cushion only process. So we're gonna have residents submit an application, which staff will review. So the application project, the application process requires buy-in from the neighbors on the street as well as adjacent streets that could be affected by the speed cushions. So we're looking for 70% approval from the neighborhood and 100% approval from the residents where the speed cushions are installed, because those speed cushions make noise 24 hours a day as people drive over them. So it's really important, and that's consistent with other communities' policies. What I'd like to do, once we bring the item to city council to approve a traffic study, at the time, we also get approval to install the speed cushions if they're warranted. So it would be a one-step process. So after we get the approvals from the city, we'll conduct a traffic study and determine if the speed cushions are warranted, and then we'll install the speed cushions. And then we'll report back to city council. So we talked about this. We require a single point of contact for the neighborhood and the speed cushions. 70% of the owners on the block and adjacent blocks shall approve the installation. And I mentioned the 100% of the property owners near the speed cushions. And the entire policy is attached to the document. Here are some of the speed cushion criteria. Local roads, only one traveling in each direction, posted speed is no more than 25 miles per hour. Fire Department, Police Department, and ambulance service consultant on every project. So this is something that city council has brought up in the past. So that is part of the policy. So 15% of the vehicle speeds is greater than the posted speed by five miles per hour or more, and 10% of the vehicle speeds is greater than 10 miles per hour over the posted speed limit. And truck traffic is less than 5% of the traffic each day. We've gone through several, 50, locations where city council has asked to do traffic studies, and we found that 40% of the speed cushion locations were warranted, and 52% of the locations we were asked to study were not warranted. So speed cushion installation, the engineering department will decide where on the street it will go. If we want to keep them mid-block, about 200 feet away from intersections, and any traffic control devices. No obstructions, driveways, utility, manholes, and drainage. And we're gonna lay out the cushions so the fire trucks and ambulances can straddle the cushions. So what we also plan to do is update our street standards and identify traffic calming measures and how they're installed. So these will be incorporated when a developer builds streets as well as when we rehabilitate streets. The new standards will define lane width for vehicles, bicycle, bikeways, and parking separated by striping, narrower vehicle lanes. The city is blessed with wide streets, but unfortunately, the striping is non-existent, or the striping allows for wider streets. And wider streets typically indicate go faster to drivers. So we want to make sure those streets are narrow. We're gonna ensure that we stall bike lanes on water, existing streets, pedestrian crossings, and curb extensions or ball belts at the intersections. Discussion, please.
Do we have some questions? Councilmember Burns, you want to start?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. You mentioned that it would require 70% of neighborhoods that are impacted by the speed bumps or humps. And so I'm aware on Clearview in District Four, between Hillcrest and Sunny Slope, as I recall, there are three speed bumps. And so there are multiple streets that open up, and Clearview is the only way in or out. And so how will you assess what that 70% looks like of impacted? And maybe you don't have an answer now, and it'd be okay, but I think we need to think about this a little more, because I can think of probably at least seven to 10 streets that are impacted every day by those three speed humps. And so I don't know if you have an answer for me, but like I said, if not, I'm not trying to pin you down.
So every case will be unique, so the policy leaves it up to the city engineer.
Okay. And then you also mentioned that 100% of the homes impacted. And I actually like that, because I could see where that could be a problem, for no other reason than resale at some point. And there could actually be a loss of an ability to park in front of your home. Having said that, same question, 100%. So if it's in front of my house and my neighbor's house, we have a direct impact on that. But are you talking two, three, five houses each side? Or because, again, I'm just trying to get direction or clarity.
The home in front of the speed cushion and two on either side.
Okay, well, that's easy.
That's the approach.
Okay, that works for me.
And if I can interrupt?
Yes, of course.
A lot of the requests come from residents on the side streets. And so they would like speed cushions in front of another resident's home. And it's important that we get the buy-in from the people whom the speed cushions are being placed in front of, because they may not be aware of it based on our current policy.
Right. And I think I read in the staff report that the City of Pasadena has amended theirs like five times. Did I read that?
Correct.
So you said earlier, my words, not yours, that this is in essence a living document. And so we have the ability to go in and amend it for cause with staff recommendation or with council requests?
Correct.
Okay. Mayor, thank you. Those are my questions for now.
Councilmember Perez, any questions?
No, I'm good.
Vice Mayor, any questions?
No, thank you for incorporating the concerns. I think everything we talked about is incorporated into the policy. So thank you.
I just have a couple. The first one is, it's more of a grammar thing. In the section under the request for removing speed humps, the second item B, I think there's some words missing there, or something's wrong with the sentence.
I'm an engineer.
Because it says something like removal of the speed cushion, at least 51% of the property owners, and property owners approve the speed cushion. But we're talking about removing a speed cushion. So anyways, I think with a correction there, I'd be fine with. I mean, otherwise, I think the policy sounds fine. The other question I did have is, we're talking about, again, the speed hump removal. It seems to be you're talking in a singular term, but like on some streets, there's multiple. So how do you handle that? Do they have to do a request for each one to be removed? Or can they put a request in, please remove all three on this street? Or how do you do that?
So this process, it's gonna be very, a high hurdle to get speed humps installed as well as speed humps removed. So if they asked for a group, you'd have a single point of contact, and that person would have to get votes from the people in the neighborhood that the city engineer designate.
So they just have to specify, we're talking about the entire street, all three, or we're saying just this one is a problem, or whatever. They have to just let you know. And okay, that is my question. Just wanted to make sure. And then my other question is, how many, I know we've been still sending you requests, so I'm just wondering how many new requests are sitting out there now to be looked at? And if we approve this tonight, will you be using this criteria for those? Or will you be, how are you gonna handle that? You just knew we were gonna ask, right?
It's a good question to ask. So we do have a list basically of either traffic calming speed cushions and/or stop sign requests. And so we have eight. On the speed, for speed cushions, we have four, and that's why we have not issued the study yet. We're still building them up. And I would think that, you know, if it were at my discretion, I would do those under the existing policy unless we receive different guidance, because they were requested before this policy was requested. Yeah, because a few of them could be stop sign. Essentially, they're asking for a stop sign. It may be a stop sign's not warranted, but you would look at a speed cushion in that road segment.
Okay, thanks. That's all the questions I have. So do we want to take some public comment, or do we have any?
Mayor Casey, there's no public comments for this item.
Okay, just a final deliberation there, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. So in looking at page 396 of the council staff report, there's a comment in removing them, and it talks about how they could not be reinstalled for 60 months, I believe is the term. And so I'm a little concerned about that, because that's five years in my old-school math. And there could be a need. And so I'd like to maybe propose that we amend that to, with the exception for causes as defined or proposed by the city manager, the fire chief, the chief of police, or the city engineer. Because, you know, we might pull them, and the next thing we have two or three accidents that could have been prevented. And I don't want to be locked into something and have to react after the fact to make a proactive decision based on facts.
If I may, we could look at amending that to say, it cannot, once it's been removed, it cannot be requested again. And then have the, so it's not initiated, but if there is a need at the city level, we would have the ability to.
Okay. And then I guess my only other comment would be, I know that when we rolled these out, it was really with the greatest emphasis on schools and par- it was really with the greatest emphasis on schools and parks. And I would like to continue that emphasis. I know that what we discovered in the process was that people would take alternative routes, and then they'll speed on those routes. And so there was collateral consequences that we couldn't anticipate at that time. But I would still really much like to see the emphasis around our schools and our parks primarily. Mayor, thank you. Those are my comments.
Sure. Councilmember Perez, any comments?
I agree with Councilman Burns. I think that the speed humps should be, or tables, and/or tables should only be around, well, I don't know if he was agreeing to that. But my view is, our kids should be safe going to school. Heavily, so around schools, around the parks, and heavily pedestrian school traffic to areas should be traffic humped or tabled. Thank you for your report, and see you next time.
Vice Mayor, do you have any comments? Okay, so I have a few. I just want to say thank you so much to the staff for preparing these and bringing them forward. I really support having policies in place around how these things get put in, and, you know, parameters. So my comments are really more about the tools chosen themselves, simply because of what we've seen on that lane and the difficulties. If there's ways to avoid some of the things from staying in the toolbox, like vertical delineators and the sea of dots that, I swear, when you turn down that lane, that yellow sea is vibrating. It's, so things like that. If there's ways to avoid some of the things that we've already encountered that don't really work for, that at least haven't worked. It's just my preference. I'm just asking if that's something we could look at. Also, I know some people really like the speed cushions. I really dislike these particular speed cushions. I've been over a lot of different types, but I don't know why these are so jarring, even at five miles an hour. And I just don't understand it. So I'm just, if there's a way for staff to maybe look at other brands, or I don't know what it is, but I just don't think you should have to ruin your suspension going five miles an hour, especially because of the fact we've put them everywhere. So I don't know if that's something that we could do, maybe test a few other models, or see if there's something that works a little better, that's not so jarring.
William and I will work together on that.
Pardon me?
William and I, the Public Works Director.
Okay, that'd be great. I concur with what all of the council has been saying about the schools. For me, that's the number-one priority is, and honestly, as I've said before, I would like to see speed tables at the schools and parks, not cushions, because we've seen that they're highly effective. They work really well at the high school. The ones that are there are old, but they still work and function and aren't getting beat up. And the other piece of it is, for bicyclists, the young bike riders around the schools, they're safer than these speed humps to ride over. So I'd really, even though I know they cost a little more, I think it's worth the investment, you know, to do speed tables around the schools, especially, maybe the parks as well. And the last thing I'll say, I brought this up before, and I, you know, other cities do have a traffic management program, so that we're taking three things into consideration, rather than just engineering, enforcement, and education are three parts of the traffic management programs. So I know that we've been relying a lot on engineering. I know we have staffing issues with the police. But I'd really love to see us adopt some kind of a program around this, instead of spending millions on engineering, big traffic calming projects as our main focus. I'd also really like to see something done about the drag racing and sideshows. I've talked about the idea of a joint task force, maybe with the sheriff. We talked about an ordinance, maybe around drag racing and sideshows, to make it a little, have more teeth. So I'm wondering if maybe we could, at a future meeting, have an agenda topic to discuss the idea of a traffic management program and/or an ordinance, and possibly a task force with some input from the chief, obviously, on how that might work. So that would be my druthers, if that's agreeable with the council. And that's all I really have. All right, so are we ready then? Does someone want to make a motion then?
So moved.
Okay. I'd just like to make a friendly amendment to approve it with the correction of the. Okay, so all in favor?
Yes.
All right, yes, so motion carries for zero. All right. And we've done, we've done item G one and two. Let's move on to item G three, presentation of potential changes to the city's procurement policy. Staff report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Casey Sorga, Admin Services Director. And we are joined on Zoom by John Coggins, one of our consultants from the Regional Government Services, also known as RGS. And tonight is really just to start the conversation. Staff is going to provide some background information based on council's request to analyze and review our procurement policy and the purchasing rules that are embedded within that policy. We are presenting some information about the data behind it, the best practices, what we've seen regionally throughout our neighbors, as we share the economy, but also just to update, offer some ideas for how to update the purchasing policy. So with that, I'll see if John is ready, and he can kick off the presentation.
Oh, good evening. And thank you, members of council, Madam Mayor, for allowing me this opportunity to address the council this evening regarding some proposed purchasing changes. I'm going to, I guess I'm not going to. I was going to share my screen with the PowerPoint that I put together, if that's possible.
Try it now.
Okay. There we go. So again, my name's John Coggins. I'm with Regional Government Services. I'm a senior advisor with RGS, and my specialty is public procurement. So I came in, and I reviewed your purchasing policy, purchasing ordinance, and drafted some recommendations for consideration. And primary amongst the recommendations is increasing your current bid limits. They're relatively low, especially for a city your size. And so what I've proposed is purchases under $10,000 would only require one bid and department director approval. Purchases between $10,000 and $100,000 would require city manager approval and three bids, or attempt to attain bids. So in other words, that would be an informal bid process that would be followed. And then for any purchases exceeding $100,000, and this is for contract services and supplies, it would require a formal advertised bid process and city council approval. So city council would be responsible for any bids exceeding $100,000. Now, this ties in nicely with an ordinance you approved last June to participate with the California Uniform Public Construction Contracting Accounting Act, which has limits of, this is just for public works. And by approving the act, that particular act, orders up to $60,000 for public works can be based on a single informal quotation. This is currently what you have in place now. Orders from $60,000 to $200,000 would require city manager approval. And then anything exceeding $200,000 would require city council approval. And that would be after a formal bid solicitation process, which means it needs to be advertised, and then a public bid opening held, and of course, the council meeting to go ahead and prove the purchase. Among other changes to your ordinance that would make sense, and by the way, this would dov, the Construction Accounting Act limits would dovetail nicely with the limits that we're proposing for supplies and contract services. Now, we also defined emergency purchases as a situation which an unforeseen circumstance constitutes a threat of physical injury or death to individuals, or serious damage or destruction of public property. And in the case of an emergency, what we're recommending is that the city manager be granted the ability to waive bid solicitation procedures, provided that city council approval, or the city council is informed of such actions at the next scheduled meeting. That's fairly common in a number of agencies, by the way. In addition, we went ahead and defined some best value procurement procedures. And this would be for public works projects only. And it would be for projects exceeding $1 million. So this is an additional approval limit over and above what the Construction Accounting Act dictates right now. So this is an additional level of approval authority that the council would have. And it would include cost and qualitative evaluation criteria, and as well as the ability to look at project agreements. And when I say project agreements, I'm referring to project labor agreements or community workforce agreements as an evaluation criteria favorable to the city. So if any of those agreements have been used previously, they could be, they could come into consideration when looking for award of a subsequent contract exceeding $1 million. So these are fairly progressive recommendations, but they really set you guys up to be where you should be right now and puts you in a very favorable position for the future as well. Additional recommendations, this is to the ordinance itself, your purchasing ordinance, is to add definitions and requirements for not only responsive bidders, but also responsible bidders. So in other words, when you look to make an award, your recommendation would be for the low, responsive, and responsible bidder. And that's defined, that would be defined, what those are. It would also allow for advertising formal bids on the city's website, and would add lifecycle cost and total cost of ownership to award criteria. A further recommendation would be to allow participation in joint powers, authorities, cooperative purchasing consortiums. Right now, you're allowed to participate, according to the ordinance, you're allowed to participate in other governmental, public agency clauses, public agency contracts that would allow your participation. This takes that a step further, which is the direction public purchasing is going right now with these JPAs forming these purchasing consortiums that you could take advantage of. They're very, very favorable. They're, when I do purchasing now, that's the first place I go. I hardly ever go out to bid anymore, because there's so many of these very favorable cooperative consortiums that you can take advantage of. And finally, we'll put the ability to allow submittal of formal bids via a secure online system or other media. Now, you don't have an online bid management system currently, but you could in the future, and you probably should. And this would enable you to take advantage of a secure bid management system for submittal of bids.
John, if I can interrupt you, we recently launched our online bid platform for public projects and city work.
Oh, that's great, yeah. Fantastic. So finally, internal controls would be maintained with approval of these changes. And those controls include, you know, the approval authority limits of the department directors, city manager, and the city council. Also, the department directors would continue to be responsible for monitoring their budgets, making sure that they're in balance. External audits conducted annually by outside firms, make sure that you guys are in compliance. And any funds that have been approved must be budgeted and covered for that intended purpose, as they are now. So these internal controls would remain in place, but it would allow you so much more flexibility in terms of approving purchases at an administrative level. You know, you guys meet for, what, once a month, something like that? And that's the only opportunity you have to approve formal bids at this time. So by freeing that up to the city manager and letting him take care of that, you're not only showing confidence in him and what he's doing, but you're focusing on the more high-dollar, high-impact purchases that affect the city. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Councilmember Burns, do you have a question?
I do. So, City Attorney, do you have any thoughts on this as proposed?
Yeah, well, I would want, I haven't reviewed this presentation before this, so we'd want some time to look at it and make recommendations to the council. My understanding is that this item is just to get feedback from council at this time and provide direction.
Thank you, City Attorney. So thank you for the presentation. I think it's great. I think it's time we move into the 21st century. And so the only concern I would have would be about, as presented this evening, the emergency situation where it would not come before council until the next public meeting. And so I would just recommend that we change that to where the mayor is notified by the city manager, and I'm fine with it from my perspective. I think it still keeps the highest elected official with the city engaged. And so for me, those are my thoughts, my comments. Thank you, Mayor. You're welcome.
Councilmember Perez, do you have questions? Vice Mayor, do you have any questions? Let's just do the questions, and then we'll do public comment and come back for final.
No questions.
Okay. I don't have questions at this time, so do we have public comment, or no?
Mayor Casey, there are no public comments for this item.
Okay. So let's do some deliberation, maybe give some direction. Did you have anything further, Councilmember Perez? Vice Mayor, did you want to weigh in, or Councilmember Perez? Go ahead, I know you have a few thoughts.
So I'd like to make a few recommendations for the, so I like the delegation of authority. I think for procurement, if you have master contracts, that would be great. And I'm not really sure whether we use master contracts or not. Like, if you have a Staples or Verizon account, it maximizes your purchasing power, get a greater discount. On items that are recurring, like every year, that you know you're going to contract for items like $50,000 and over, for increasing, or $100,000, you can put them on a master contracts list and bring it once or twice a year to city council for review and authorization, delegation of authority to execute those. It also is transparent, so I'm not sure if we have SAP or REBA, but most agencies, anyone from the public can look up any contracts. So they can just go in, you know, who's contracted with the city, and also to be able to advertise how they can, how any small business or business can actually procure a contract with the city of policy. On the project labor agreements, I'd like to change the threshold from $1 million to $250,000, because we are a very small jurisdiction. I know, like, the city of San Jose has, it's, you know, less than that, and they're just, I think they're two million or a million folks. So $250,000 seems reasonable for a PLA or community workforce agreement. And they're also, with that, with the community benefits, that needs to be negotiated with the regional building construction trades in order for you to actually obtain those community benefits for whatever it is that we're looking for. So that would need to be brought back for review after negotiation. But that would be, that would be, those are my comments and recommendations.
I don't really have much to add. I would agree with Councilmember Morales on the PLA and lowering the threshold. But other than that, just bringing it back, and maybe having some, you know, input from the city attorney, I think we'd be good to move forward.
So if we have consensus, what we would do is we would take this feedback, add it to what was presented, and bring back, basically, an ordinance that would codify this, and that would go through the city attorney process as well.
So, council, do we have? So council, do we have consensus with the recommendations we've given? Okay. Then, yes, you have it. All right. I need to get consensus of council because it is 10 o'clock. Do we want to carry on and finish up? No? And also, there's been a request, we're going to move item six forward so we can discuss the TOT tax measure. So can we get a staff report?
Mayor Casey and Council Jennifer Woodworth, city clerk, with a staff report for this item. So this is in response to city council request earlier this year to bring back an item to consider a TOT transient occupancy tax ballot measure for a future ballot. Just a little bit of information, the current TOT is set at 8%. It was, has not changed since it was initially adopted in 1986. There was an effort to increase it to 12% in 2014, but that did fail on the vote. And so this is before council to decide what level you might want to include in a future ballot. Please note that as the financial impact does, note that every 1% increase to the TOT would generate approximately 75,000 more in annual revenue based on current projected revenues for the current fiscal year. If the council does want to bring it forward for a future ballot measure, if you want to bring it forward for the March 5th, 2024 ballot, council would need to adopt a resolution calling that election by December 5th. If you want to bring it forth for the November 5th, 2024 election, you would need to call that election and bring the ballot measure forward by August 9th, 2024. And I'm open to any questions.
Do you have any questions, councilmember Burns?
Thank you, mayor. So I think I'll hold my questions for comments. Thank you, mayor.
Okay. Any other questions or do we have any public comment?
Yes, we do. The first public speaker is Gordon Machado, city treasurer.
Mayor Warre, treasurer is making it to the podium. The 1% that we based off of a projection does not really factor in the new Holiday Inn Express that just recently opened because we went on actuals. So there is a new hotel in the, in the city since the, the analysis.
Good evening. 14 years, I guess it was the last time, or 2014, which is what, eight, nine, 10 years ago. Also, the TOT tax has been presented and failed probably 10 years prior to that or better. As presented to you, it's 8% now. Looking at your, at the state average, it's around 11% to state overall average. I would encourage the 12% to make it an even number rather than the 11 or 9, whatever that may be. The problem has always been when you're talking about a tax and you put it on the public ballot, the majority of the public reads the word tax and assumes it's towards them and they'll vote it down. So it's primarily the education part of this that you have to convince them that they are not paying that tax. It's the person coming to community and you have to be very diligent and delicate doing that too because the person coming to the community may be their mother, their father, grandparents and all that. So it's a very, you know, it's a very, whatever the right word is, but I think that since we're so far behind, the opportunity is there and I encourage that we do it. And the consultant that's usually hired to do it, I think you have to be very strong with them that they have to emphasize that it's not a local property tax or it's not a local tax for the transit occupancy. Thank you.
Thank you.
And those are the only public comments we have for this item.
Okay. Let's bring it back for discussion then. Councilmember Burns, go ahead.
Thank you, mayor. So I couldn't agree more in regards to, we need to bring this back. We're leaving money on the table every year that we don't. The fact that it goes back to the 90s when it was first implemented, time has come, and I couldn't agree more also that we need to really find somebody to aggressively and correctly portray what this really is. It's my understanding that the, the thoughts the last time it failed was people were concerned that we're going to tax the homeless. And that couldn't be further from the truth if that was correct. And so I also was thinking about 12%. I mean, I've looked all over the board and I'm curious if there is a way to earmark the money so that it really, for me, even on taxes, I think the public wants to see the value that they're getting in return. And I saw in the staff report that it could be, you know, we, it feels like we could use the money for pretty much anything we wanted if we received it. But, you know, I would argue that we hire another firefighter or we hire another police officer or you pick it so that people can really truly see the value of this. For me, I, I don't, I'm dumbfounded how we're having this conversation in 2023, but I'm certainly going to support moving forward with this and would like to know the next steps after this, assuming council approves it tonight. I also would think that November 5th would be my ideal because I think we'll get a better turnout at a general election. And for me, I, my understanding is all this takes is 50 plus 1%, is that correct?
That is my understanding for this one.
Okay. Those are my comments. Thank you, mayor.
Yes, councilmember Perez, anything? Vice Mayor, do you have anything?
I think to our treasurer's point, if we do move forward with this, we really have to think about the, the campaign behind educating and making sure that we have someone that knows what they're doing in terms of educating the public that it's not really a tax on, on them and what it really, what it really means. So we may need to invest in, in that as well.
Yes, I agree with pretty much everything said. And messaging is very important. As we saw in our last election, we put something on there about the biker rally and everyone thought they approved the biker rally. And so we've been hearing about it ever since when it was simply an advisory vote. So messaging is crucial. And I was thinking 11%, but I'm, I'm kind of thinking maybe it should be 12%. It was, we don't want to have to do this again in a few years. So it's going to be another 20, 30 years before we.
Actually, I was thinking 13.
Yeah, I don't want to push it too much. I mean, it seems like the average was somewhere between 10 and 11. I know someone Batista's at 12%, so they did their, their work. So what's the will of the council? What would you like to move ahead with the? And is 12 agreeable? Okay, so that's our consensus.
And is council have consensus for the November 5th, 2024 ballot?
I think so. That'll give plenty of time to, if we need to engage anyone to help us with messaging and prepare.
Absolutely. And I do want to let council know that we have already spoken with Best, Best and Krieger, who help out with this type of thing, to talk to them about a public outreach and education campaign that would go along with it, including what the money would be used for and all of those types of materials.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may, will clarify the earmarking and whether that would then force a two-thirds vote versus, you know, if you did a general tax measure, you normally would be there versus the standard TOT.
Losing track. I've been switching around too much. I think we're going to item five now? At least we skipped four. Okay, there we are. Presentation to the city council of city of Hollister regarding the fire protection and life safety district feasibility study.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Bob Barton, El Campo Fire Chief. This is going to be a brief update on the fire feasibility study. On San, San Benito County Office of Emergency Services has retained AP Triton consultants to conduct a special fire district formation on June 27th. The Board of Supervisors approved AP Triton consultant. What they're providing is an overview of steps and process that Triton will be taking to initiate this project. So there's a three-step process right now to begin the kickoff, the kickoff meeting, which consists of contact list for key personnel of all three jurisdictions, a data update that's going to include various data tables, worksheets, incident data and GIS files, and a field working, a field work planning session. They're going to schedule site visits, conduct stakeholder interviews, facility inspections in regard to conducting this project. And that concludes my update right now. I'm available for questions.
Councilmember Burns, do you have any questions?
No, mayor. Thank you.
Any questions? Do we have public comment on this item?
There are no public comments for this item.
Okay. Is there any further deliberation?
Thank you, mayor. More, I think, to, to the city manager. I don't, I didn't hear in the presentation or read in the presentation where we're talking about the financial costs associated with this process versus our current practice. And so for me, again, I, I just, the money seems to be a big part of the conversation for me moving forward. And whether we go forward with this process or stay status quo, I would like to know how that, the, the current contract factors into this process and where we move forward. Because my sense is this isn't going to be a quick process. But my fear is that we're, we're spending a lot of money for fire service and rightfully so. But I would like to see the county pay their fair share as well as the city of San Juan Batista.
Yes. So during the budget, that was some of the direction we received. And I made a commitment of three months and we have been working on that, on the reviewing the services that we're providing and the financials. Chief and I are actually meeting later this week to drill down some more. And so we will make that. And I think it'll align with the timing of this feasibility study so you'll be able to have all of it side by side.
Perfect. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. So is there any other deliberation, direction, anything? Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. We're going to move on to item five, appointment of an ad hoc committee to review and make recommendations regarding revision of the council code of ethics and conduct. Am I the staff report or are you going to present something?
I was planning on talking about this if you'd like, mayor.
Go for it. Please.
So at the August 7th, 2023 council meeting, the city council directed that an agenda item be brought forward to appoint an ad hoc committee to review and make recommendations regarding revising the council code of ethics and conduct. And that's what this item is. And just as a reminder, an ad hoc committee can't have more than two members of council sit on it.
Okay. Do we have any questions? Do we have public comment on this at all?
There are no public comments for this item.
Okay. Did you have anything you wanted to add or?
Of course, mayor. Thank you. I, I'm fine with an ad hoc committee, but my fear is that we've seen some bad behavior in recent times with this council. And my experience has been ad hoc committees can, just, they can get stuck in neutral. And, and for me, candidly, I don't know that it's necessary for there to be an ad hoc committee if this council could just propose tax amendments. And, and what I'm talking about here is, you know, right now we have the ability to censure one of ourselves if, if there's a, a problem or there are other degrees of, of public scrutiny that can be improvised. But my, my, my thoughts are we now have a $50,000 fund that we can use for community improvements. And perhaps maybe one of the things we do is just go in and, and, and find a process where we could reduce that when council members behave poorly and it's a council direction. My other thought would be that ultimately there needs to be some financial consequence. And, and, and maybe, maybe this ad hoc committee could roll this something out in a month or so. But my fear is in a month or so, we'll going to have two more council meetings. And right now, it's, it's a public embarrassment to me. And so I would like to move this forward quickly. I, I don't know. My, also my concern is it feels like we might be moving in a direction that most councils have not chosen to go or had the need to go. And so I don't want this to go on for month on month on month as the bad behavior continues forward, if it does. So those are my thoughts, mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Perez, any thoughts?
I think we have enough ad hocs, so to speak. I think that part of the solution to this problem, if not all the solution, is us watching each other, you know, it's standing up a little bit more. And I nominate Dolores. Yeah, I, I don't know. Do we, I mean, do we really need this ad hoc committee or can be, I mean, to find out some more information about fines and all those things, that's great. But it's like, I don't know. It's, it's, it's kind of seems like we're just kind of playing into us to, to that type of personality that it's, it's, we can't let it go on. It's, did I confuse myself enough? Yeah. I'm torn between there.
Vice Mayor, did you have something to add?
I think to, to councilmember Burns's point, I think we can, and I don't know if we can because of the way that it's written, but there's definitely action that we can take right now with how the code of conduct is currently written. So part one was already done, which is a written letter next to censure and then removed from committees. We can add additional items to the code of conduct. But I think step one is just applying the code of conduct to the behavior now and then making additional recommendations. I really like that idea about just either removal from committees, which we already have, and then just finding based on the amount of discretionary funds, like 10,000. But your, the concern I have with that is like you are, it's impacting the community and not the council member. That's my only concern with that. And that's a, a community that's in need. But removal from committees is probably our next step in terms of, of that.
If I could jump in just real quick regarding your, your code of conduct. So the mayor has the authority to initiate action if a council member's behavior may warrant sanction. Similar to what has been done in the past, the council, the mayor will take the initiative if she desires. And that's based on the understanding that the offenses were referred to the mayor, which you would just have to affirm that, mayor.
Yes. We'll be discussing that later. So there will be action initiated. But as far as the ad hoc committee itself, and I, I hear the comments and I don't disagree with some of them, but I think there's more than just some minor tweaking that needs to be done to this code of conduct. And, and we also discussed some potential administrative sanctions and somehow coordinating. I just think there's more to it and I think having two members meeting and, and working with the city attorney to make sure this is a better code of conduct. Because I don't, what was written before, there's, there's obviously been some problems with and it has needed some revision. So I, I would feel comfortable and I'm happy to sit on that. And I, I would like to appoint Dolores to sit with me on that and work with the city attorney if, if the council is, you know, has consensus to do that.
I think my comment would be we have to have it done within two weeks to three weeks or have a time stretch to have it returned back to councilmember Burns's point. We, it needs to be done immediately.
I do. I agree. It doesn't preclude us from taking action now on what we have. But I think, I want to get it done right and I want to make sure it lines up with administrative things that we can have a little more teeth in what we're doing because I think that was your desire when you, when you mentioned it. Because right now, the taking someone off the committee, censuring doesn't seem to have any effect in this particular case. So I think we need more and I think we need guidance from city attorney to do that. But I think we could do it quickly if it's just a, you know, two member or three member, you know, working together. So I think that's doable.
So you just need a motion appointing the committee.
So moved to appoint the mayor and the vice mayor.
Do I hear a second?
Okay, second that.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. All right. There we are. Okay. Reports from city council members regarding committees on which they serve. Anything, councilmember Burns?
Nothing to report, mayor.
Councilmember Perez?
I was going to do a joint with you, yes.
Okay. Yeah, I can, I can take the lead on that and you can pipe in. I guess I did write something out. Did you have any others committees serving? Okay. Vice Mayor? Okay, where's my list here? Okay, where's my list here? So the main thing I wanted to talk about was the governance meeting that was held this week. The water district invited folks in, and they wanted to inform us about two projects that the water board is going to be voting on soon. The first had to do with increasing aquifer storage and test wells being cited and feasibility studies being done around it. And this project is approximately $42 million and is being funded in part by grants, but will also be covered by resident water billing and rates. The second project, a little more complex, has to do with the county participating in the Sisk Dam, which is part of the San Luis reservoir. You may have seen it being worked on right now to raise the level up by 15 feet. They're doing that for seismic purposes, because in a big earthquake, the wall could come down 15 feet and cause flooding. However, they are also planning to add an additional 15 feet for storage of additional water. The way that the district folks described it, we're purchasing a cup and a piece of the water, and it is supposed to be specifically for San Benito County. One of the concerns is that even though there's an MOU that several groups, including Valley Water and others are, who are buying in with sign, there's no guarantee that we would actually be getting that water year to year. It would depend, and, you know, it is the federal government. So the cost to San Benito County for our portion would be $68 million. The way they intend to pay for this is to create a capacity fee, which is going to be tacked on to each new home unit being built. And it will be in the amount of $12,265, and that's for each unit. Also concerning, again, we're talking about more fees for housing development. It can have, you know, obviously, it can have impacts on affordable housing being built. And also, the fee is going to end up getting passed on to consumers, and it's going to cause housing prices to go up. So it's concerning. The other piece that's concerning is that they're going to be voting on this in 60 to 90 days. And the fees would go into effect 30 days after adoption and would be applicable to all development, even those that are already in process. Which means that, you know, developments that are in the middle, that already have their financing in place, are suddenly going to have to come up with $12,000 for every unit they're developing. And which is, I see problems ahead. I know a lot of folks that were sitting around the table, we had a lot of elected officials and others, raised a lot of concern about the uncertainty of the water gain and the cost to the consumers. But really, the governance meeting was not a voting body. The water district was just sharing information with us. But I just wanted to share that with everyone. The water board is the elected board, and they are going to be voting on this. So I just wanted to get it out there.
And if I may add a couple of other things?
Yes, please.
So at the $12,000 per unit rate, it's going to take 5,612 units to be sold over a period of time. The other thing is, the really good thing about it is, if the federal government did give us our cup, so to speak, in the dam, first of all, San Benito County, thank you, the board of the water district board. You guys have done such a great job to keep us in a good position, first of all. You know, we do have good groundwater, and we will be asking them to come and do a presentation for us because they have better information and know what they're talking about. But it sounds like a great idea. It's just, because the water that we would be getting from the dam is MNI, which is municipal and industrial, it's not ag water. So it's, we can drink it, it's usable. Water is a precious resource. And you know what, we just, we're lucky we're coming out of a drought. But what if, what if that, what was it, how many gallon or acre feet? I forgot. Anyways, it's something we just wanted to let you guys know because it is coming down the pipe, and they will be voting on it.
In 60 to 90 days. The other thing I just wanted to mention really quickly is switching gears to, I went to the Economic Development Committee that the county has. And so, they were discussing direction of the committee. Two of the two supervisors that run the meetings are hiring a consultant to do an overview and report to help them identify specific areas to target for economic development. We also had a discussion about the wine industry and tourism and the importance of Siena Goro Road being repaired and repaved because it's a huge impediment for access to the wineries. So that was my other meeting. So do we want to go on then to informational report, report out? Want to do the council first, or do you want to go through and give a report?
Just really quick, I have reached out to the water district to get a walkthrough with staff. And so, looking to do that very soon on the, on the project you were just discussing. Also, just like to take a minute to highlight that the tennis courts at Dunn Park have been the, there was one of the, the nets was broken, the poles were broken. So Tina's team was able to get all of that ordered and repaired, and then did some painting work out there. So both tennis courts are back open, the pickleball courts are open, and the handball walls were all painted by her and her team. So I just want to take a minute to highlight that.
Were any of those big cracks addressed, those issues?
So we will be bringing forward very soon some options and quotes to discuss resurfacing and options for the tennis courts and pickleball courts there as well. I'm sorry, I should have mentioned that with it. That was the short term fix to get the court activated, and then we will be bringing back an item very soon.
City Attorney, did you have anything? Chief, did you have anything to report?
Just one thing, thank you, Mayor. Just to let you know, a little quick background. In 2021, Georgetown University Law Center developed a program called Active Bystandership for Law Enforcement. The main goal of the ABLE, better known as ABLE, project is to teach officers effective ways to step in when they witness misconduct and help agencies create a culture that supports such interventions. Some of the most obvious examples when you hear of intervening and stopping something are the obvious cases you've seen across the nation of officers obviously not doing their job and other officers nearby not stopping them. That obviously is a great big part of this. But in our situation, and what really brought me, and when I became aware of this, thinking that there's so much value in this, is that part, but also the other part. They gave several examples of officers going on their duties and arresting people. And they gave an example of a sergeant handcuffing someone, putting him in their car, searching them. And on the way to the jail, the suspect had a gun, pulled the gun out and shot and killed the officer. When they interviewed all the people involved, several of them said they noticed that the search wasn't good. They noticed that the handcuffs weren't really handcuffed the right way. They noticed all these things, and then the psychologists were asking, why didn't you say something? And this is where this project came from. They went down deep and they discovered why, what are the obstacles stopping people from doing what they should do? And this program is a fantastic program. With the help of city manager David Marioni, we were accepted into the project, were one of the first aid agencies in our region that are going to be ABLE law enforcement agencies. Today, we had about one-third of our staff have received the training. We have four, we're going to have, we have two right now, we're going to have four trained trainer trainers in-house. We're going to continue with the program to complete the training for our entire staff. And it's an ongoing thing with our train to trainers, going to be yearly updates and always constantly coming back and interviewing our officers and making sure that our culture always stays the same, that even a rookie, when he sees something wrong, has the ability and feels comfortable enough to say something. And us, as senior officers and supervisors, have to be, have to give them that leeway to not, to change those cultural things that have happened over the years, where if you don't, if you're a new guy, you're not supposed to say anything. That's not our agencies, and this is what helps emphasize this. So Captain Patania was in the first group today, and she said it was fantastic. There's a lot of role playing and a lot of, of the elements that are part of ABLE. It's a great program, and I just wanted to thank publicly, publicly, city manager David Marioni for supporting us. We needed his support to be part of the project and advise the city council that we're doing this and hopefully be completed within the next couple of weeks, the entire staff.
That's awesome. Thank you. City clerk, did you have anything?
Nothing to report.
Paul, anything?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Okay, so let's go to the council then. Mr. Burns, would you like to?
Of course. So just five or six things, maybe. So I would like to request from my discretionary funds that we install cameras at the Valley View Park, also known as Whalers Park. I'd also like to put a high level of signage on Sunny Slope Village. In the past, it's been painted on the stucco sound walls. And so, I'm looking to raise the standard there. And again, I'd like for staff to move forward to maybe get some proposals so that we can move forward with those relatively soon, please. I, last council meeting, I brought up some businesses I'd like to recognize. And so, and I think I inferred that I would be doing this on a regular basis moving forward. So I would like to recognize moving forward as the city clerk proposed through just a certificate of recognition. G and M Auto Repair, they've been here forever. Hollister Paints and the Cannery. Again, I think the Cannery employs a lot of folks, and I know sometimes they've been under a lot of pressure. But for me, I think I'd like to move those forward if council's supportive. Congratulations to our city manager. Man, I like saying that. But now that I've said that, I'd also like to get council's support to move forward and give the city manager the authority to move forward in the recruitment of an assistant city manager. We've seen the value of assistant city managers in the past, and so I'd like to move forward with that. I'd also like to ask the planning staff to provide a ballpark for the CUP that Cherie Ashley brought up during public comment for Bright Future Recovery. I know that in the past, this council's had an appetite for that. And so, I'd like to know what the costs are. It seems like they're doing their best to stand those costs. So I'd like to move that forward as well. I'd like to confirm that the council conduct that occurred at the last council meeting is going to be addressed. I'm embarrassed as a council member by the demeanor of one specific council member. And I know that we've had some preliminary conversation this morning, or this evening, about an ad hoc committee. But I also think that we need to move forward with that. And so, I'd like to confirm, I did a brief review of the contact ordinance, and I counted no less than seven violations. I was generous. I don't think we need to spend a lot of city resources to do that. I think there's plenty of video evidence that will support the outcome, if that's the process. And so, I want to make sure that we, you know, I don't have an appetite for forgiveness in this case. And so, I'd like to move that forward. And then, let me see. The other thing is, from the city attorney's office, I want to thank you. I know that we got a letter in regards to the mountain lion incident that happened about a year ago. And I have a lot of questions. It was very complimentary of our police performance, and I don't doubt that. But I still have a lot of questions. However, at the top of the letter that we received, it said confidential. And in referring to the code of conduct, there's a reference to that. So I'd either like to have that scheduled for a closed session follow-up, preferably. And if not, if it's not something that will rise to a closed session, then I'd like to have it agendized for a regular council meeting. And so, with that, Mayor, those are my thoughts and comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Perez?
I too would like to welcome our new city manager. Look forward to a great future. I'm just really ecstatic with all staff. I also would like to bring back Bright Future Recovery. Bright Future Recovery. And that's pretty much all I have. Everything else I've talked to, we've, we're talking about going over our park ordinances and what's, what we can do and what we can't do there. I've already talked to staff about that and look forward to having a report on that. That's it.
Hi, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. So I support the Bright Future, bringing that back. I completely agree with councilmember Burns in terms of the incidents. I'd like to hope to see that back on the agenda as soon as possible so that action can be taken. I would also like to, I believe it's a resolution, but I'm not, I'm not sure, Jennifer, you'd have to correct me. So there's a, there's two organizations that have done a lot of work. IUPA 16 and Local 12. They've had several of their members do cleanup days for the city of Hollister and the Hollister Downtown Association. They've volunteered for the 150th Carnival when we had it. They've also donated not only their time, but several funds to help people at the San Benito Food Drive. And recently, they coordinated and helped donate a lot of money to a school for a backpack drive. And I'd like to just formally recognize them for their contributions to their community. A lot of people don't like to be recognized, but I feel like the totality of all their events, all their contributions warrant a thank you from at least the city of Hollister. And I'm happy to get you the details, and you can correct me on whatever it is that is the appropriate thing.
I'll just let you know it's proclamations, but other than that, everything's perfect.
Thank you. I also like to just follow up on what, if we can get the exact details of what needs to happen for the Gavon College, the last meeting that we had in terms of making sure that we are on track, all the different elements that need to move forward, whether it's, I know the city was taking on responsibility, but what does that look like so that we are just kept updated on how that moves forward? And if we have a contact or appoint a person that's going to be making sure that it's moving, moving forward. I greatly appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, one more thing. Congratulations. Yeah, I'll start with congratulations so I don't forget. Congratulations, David. We're really happy to have you here permanently as our city manager. I forgot to mention, as far as just things attended, I did, on Sunday, I went to the Unity in the Community event at Dunn Park. It was organized by Joe Medina and a group called Feed the Streets. It was a really unique gathering of different groups. There were local churches, car clubs, union groups, and local businesses. And they got together to feed anyone in need of a hot meal free of charge. It was a pretty lively scene, and I met folks that came from Soladad, Salinas, Watsonville, and Marina. It's just, it was very heartwarming because it was just such a wonderful community. And I know they're trying to do this once a month to feed folks at Dunn Park. I'm not sure what, if anything, at the city level, we can do to support them. But especially coordinating, having the bathrooms open when they have the event would be good. So I don't know what else we can do, but I know that kind of came up on Sunday. But it was a really great event, so I just wanted to put that out there. Okay, so yes, request for investigation, disciplinary action. Due to the unprofessional behavior of councilmember Resendez at the August 7th, 2023 council meeting in violation of our municipal code of conduct, I am initiating action to hold a disciplinary proceeding. However, I would like to ask for this proceeding to be coordinated with an independent investigation into specific allegations against councilmember Resendez of physical intimidation, harassment, and stalking of councilmember Morales. I would like to get the consensus of the council to move forward on this. Also, this is something that's been weighing on me, and I haven't brought it out, but I feel compelled. I would like to ask the city attorney for a legal opinion and/or possibly the attorney general to get some, some information. A resident shared with me a report of a serious nature indicating that councilmember Resendez is on a federal watch list. My understanding this stemmed from elder abuse charges that were brought against him by the state of California when he was a nurse, and that he pled guilty, no contest to the charges, and was convicted. As part of this, he was placed As part of this, he was placed on that federal watch list, which prevents him from working any place that contracts with Medicare patients. I did follow up and go on to the California Nursing State Licensing website and verified that yes, there is a conviction listed there for patient abuse and neglect in two thousand and five. So I do find some credibility into that claim. My concern and the reason I'm bringing this up is that if he is on a federal watch list, it's my understanding that he cannot be employed by the federal government, cannot contract or do business with the federal government. And so that brings a serious question for me as to whether he can vote on any federal program or federal grant agenda items that might come before council. So I'm asking our City Attorney to review the matter, provide a legal opinion and/or to seek counsel from the Attorney General's office on this as far as the ramifications to the city and any impact on our ability and his ability to participate on federal agenda items. And that is all I have. Thank you.
So I'll recap for consensus. So Councilmember Burns had with the discretionary fund to bring an item back for cameras at the Whale Park and Sunny Slope Village signage. So per the policy, I will be bringing that back as an agenda item. So with the policy, I don't need to get consensus from the whole group, but this is really the first usage of that policy. So I just want to highlight that. We'll bring that back for, for an, an item for consideration. Recognizing G and M Auto, Hollister Paint and the Cannery. Proceeding with the assistant City Manager recruitment and you may, you may remember when we were going through the process with amending for some of the airport director and other positions, we do have some, we do have room in the budget for that or in the contract and budget. So that's, that's would not come back before you because you've already taken an action to amend the contract to allow for that, for another recruitment. The, let's see. Bright Future, I received consensus just through your comments. We did have a couple of comments about council conduct. So with the mayor's comments, Mayor or City Attorney, I would look to you to.
Yeah, so the mayor didn't need consensus to initiate the action. That can be your sole discretion, but if council wants to give consensus, that's fine. But we would need consensus to have me provide an opinion regarding the federal watch list.
Yes, please.
Thank you, Mayor. So I've heard the federal watch list. I've, I've heard the, the comments about the, the situation with Councilmember Resendez and Vice Mayor Morales. But then I've also, I'm thinking that these are three different items. And so, and then the conduct, I'm just going to say conduct unbecoming based on the current ordinance. I think those are three separate things. And so I would support moving forward with all three. But I, I just, what I don't want to have happen is the lines be blurred between the conduct in, in public and the conduct involving the mayor's comments.
Okay, my understanding is that the mayor has called for an investigation regarding both the conduct out here in the public and with respect to conduct toward Vice Mayor.
Okay, so I was, there was a little confusion because there were the, you know, allegations that were a little more serious with regard to Councilmember Morales. We did want to, or I did want to have an investigation, you know, to look into that. But do we need an investigation for the disciplinary hearing as Councilmember Burns said there's?
It's not required.
Yeah, I don't, I just didn't know if we needed to do that in combination or do we hold them separately? That's the.
You can do it each separate. So I'm understanding then you're saying an investigation regarding the conduct toward Vice Mayor Morales. Then you'd like to bring back some form of discipline at the next council meeting regarding alleged conduct out here in the public. And then there's a separate item where we do need consensus and that's for me to look further at the impact of a council member being on a federal watch list.
Just point of clarification. So for the conduct in public, we know that there's plenty of evidence. You can take action on that. For mine, there was two witnesses. So you can take action on that. And I'm also going to have a discussion with other, in another, in another agency. And the third, I think, so I think those two things, you may not need an investigation because there's, there's already evidence and another party that's going to do an investigation. The third would be the, the federal watch list.
So.
So just, so I guess it's one, right? One for an investigation or just a legal opinion on the federal watch list.
I understand you're going to probably speak with an agency specifically, but given things took place here and council members did witness things, I feel, would feel better of following the same procedure we did with Councilmember Perez where we had an investigator interview the people and document it. But it doesn't preclude you from speaking too. And because this does, that process does take a little bit of time, I would prefer to just go ahead with the disciplinary hearing at the next and deal with that separately. So I guess three separate items is the way we're going to go if there is consensus on that.
So we really only need the investigator for part B in closed session?
Yes, that's what I was saying.
Okay, looks like I had consensus. I saw all the heads nodding yes to all three.
Okay. All right.
Mayor, if I may continue with the, with the other items.
I'm done. Okay, go, please, go ahead.
Thank you. And then we had a request from Councilmember Burns to either bring the mountain lion incident in closed session. If it is not something that would fit within the parameters of closed session after City Attorney review, agendize in open session. Is that something that the council would like to entertain?
It will most likely be in, out in public. I can't, I have trouble finding a closed session basis for that. I'll look again. But I'm telling you, probably it will be an open session item and you may have to vote to waive the attorney-client privilege in that instance. So, but I'll look.
So you'll follow up on that then? We don't need to take any?
Just consensus, yeah, for me to.
Okay.
To either bring it in close or open.
On that then? Yeah.
Okay, in regards to the event at the park, this last, yesterday, staff is working to review ways of getting there. There have been discussions with the organizer. In regard to the bathroom, there was a serious plumbing issue yesterday morning. So it wasn't a, it was closed. It was probably for the benefit of all that no one went in there.
It's probably better.
Tina's team has been out there and has already fixed it.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, we have, some of our park attendees have been taking to flushing clothing items, all kinds of various items down the, the public restrooms. And so we did talk today about looking at some snaking equipment that staff could use instead of having to go through the whole process of bringing someone out and hiring them. It is a reoccurring theme.
Okay, thank you for that.
Councilmember Morales asking for the recognition of Local Twelve. And I'm sorry, I didn't get the second group.
I'm sorry, I'm tired. Let me look, let me look real quick. It's IUPA sixteen and Local Twelve.
Very good. Gavlin College, so William and I are working on that. I've already had a few discussions and that is moving along and more meetings are scheduled with the team. So. And we covered both of yours, Mayor. So I believe that that is all of the items that we just reviewed.
Okay. All right, we don't have any unfinished business, no new business. So do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries four zero. Meeting is adjourned.
Recording stopped.